On how to watch, attend, and participate, as well as agendas, minutes, and recordings can be found on Broomfield's website at www.broomfield.org/councilmeetings. The public may also participate in public comment, either in person or by calling 855-695-3744 and pressing *3 to be placed in the queue for comment. Screeners will ask callers for their first and last name, neighborhood, and the agenda item the caller would like to comment on. If you'd like to speak more than one item on tonight's agenda, you will need to press *3 each time to be placed back in the queue for comment. Public comment will be limited to 90 minutes per item. The first 1 to 15 participants in the queue will have three minutes to speak. The next 16 to 25 participants in the queue will have two minutes to speak. If time remains, the next 26-plus participants in the queue will have one minute to speak. For our hard-of-hearing residents present, we have wireless headsets available through our AV team in the back of the council chambers. The city council regular meeting is called to order. Councilmember Leslie is excused, and a quorum of council is present. Will everyone please rise to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In an effort to keep order for tonight's meeting, I ask council members to limit their comments to five minutes. If council members are given an opportunity to speak for a second time on an item, they should limit their comments communication to two minutes. We will plan on a 10-minute break at approximately 8:00 p.m. We will begin with council's review and approval of this evening's agenda. Council may add or remove items from the consent agenda, or council may revise the order of business for the meeting. Does any member of council have any comments or questions regarding this evening's agenda?
Oh, I don't have a button. Do I? Can I do that? Never mind. So I just want to let everybody know that Mayor Protem Schaaf is getting some practice time with our new software, because he'll be chairing the meeting on March 12th, when most of us are in DC for a conference. So just to clear up any mysteries. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Are there any objections to this agenda being approved? Seeing none, this agenda is approved. There are no items under petitions and communications this evening. Councilmember reports are next. Before I turn it over to my colleagues, I wanted to take a moment to mention that council will be holding its annual focus session this Friday and Saturday at Broomfield's Crescent Grange. This meeting is a brainstorming session, similar to a study session, and no formal action will be taken at the focus session. Like past years, any recommendations that direct staff to reprioritize existing goals, KIPs, or funding will be introduced at a future council meeting and per standard process, subject to public comment. For more information on council's focus session and view the agenda, please visit the city council calendar on Broomfield's website, broomfield.org. Does any member of council have any reports or updates this evening? Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to let council know that I, along with Councilmembers Marsh Holson and Henkel, attended the National Association of Counties DC trip this pa— two weeks ago roughly. You will have my full report, and I apologize, that's going to be another lengthy one. You'll have it sometime after this weekend, when I finish my midterm exams. Those are going to take a little priority over you. But all in all, it was a good trip. Lot of good stuff with transportation. I'll let the other two council members, respectively, share their views from their respective committees. And it was great to lobby for Broomfield's interests with especially Representative Pedersen. For my word, I know specifically I chatted with her and her staff regarding the airport noise and the leaded fuel issue, and tried to brainstorm some solutions so that way we can lessen the impact that the airport is having on our residents. But with that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Lim?
I just wanted to make everybody aware that there's opportunities for residents with Workforce Center events. Tomorrow, there's a February networking and career fair that's in-person. There's an emphasis now on youth in high school becoming aware of summer opportunities and also long-term opportunities in their careers. On March 13th, Legacy High School is having a job fair in conjunction with the Workforce Center. And yesterday, Broomfield High School had a similar job fair. There's also workshops that are always going on at the Workforce Center. Tomorrow, there's an Ageism workshop for those of us who are a little older. So please look at the Workforce Center website for other opportunities. Thanks.
Councilmember Marsh Holson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yes, as Councilmember Ward said, I attended the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference in Washington DC a couple of weeks ago. It was a good conference, a lot of good meetings. Spoke with Congresswoman Pedersen at length for different various things, but one suggestion that came up was the potential of looking at congressional direct spending requests for particular infrastructure needs, like some of the sidewalk needs that we have discussed recently, and the potential for possibly in the future of looking at funding for those. I also serve on the NACO Finance Pensions Intergovernmental Affairs Steering Committee, and we had a good meeting, had a couple informational sessions, and as Councilmember Ward mentioned, I will have my written report done shortly. I also serve on the Colorado Municipally Executive Board. We had our monthly meeting last week. We took positions—the CML positions on various legislation that are going through the State House. We also had a discussion on the neighboring communities, city of Denver, and the potential of maybe giving them some assistance with their dues that they owe for this year, given the dramatic influx of costs they've seen related to the immigration, the migrant crisis. So those are all good meetings this weekend. Yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Henkel?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I was able to serve as the Metro Area County Commissioner's Chair and get a consensus, a unanimous consensus, not only from the surrounding areas in Denver, but also Douglas County supported unanimously the work authorization expediency for those who are seeking asylum. And so what we did is we took that letter to Representative Brittany Pedersen. Like we said, we went to the NACO conference, and we talked at length about expediting the work authorization for those seeking asylum. And then that was also passed at NACO as well. So very happy that that happened and happy that we can work in a bipartisan way to make sure that we get people to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Del Cadeo?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I wanted to let folks know that we are having our Skystone Town Hall coming up on March 15th. So we look forward to— Councilmember Ward and myself look forward to hearing more from the community members and hopefully getting to chat with a lot of folks. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I just have one thing to report. This last Saturday, I held a Ward 3 community meeting at the La Belle French Bakery and was encouraged to keep doing this. So next month, I'll hold another one. Let's see. Any other councilmember comments? Yes, Mayor?
Just me. Okay. Thanks, y'all. So as some of you may know, I serve on the State Property Tax Commission, representing CML, which is all of our cities and towns. And we've met five times so far. We have three more meetings before the March 15th deadline, if we don't extend it. And the last meeting, last Friday, we heard from local businesses, small businesses, who are also struggling with rising property tax. So that is something that the commission wants to consider. Also, they asked for more leniency in making payments, possibly monthly, possibly three times instead of two. We also heard from special districts, river districts, and we broke out into small groups concerning taxpayer relief, assessments, and local control. I was in the assessments group. And one of the ideas that is kind of being floated around is a smoothing average for property tax valuation period. So instead of just taking that one snapshot in time, which in this case, last year, was a historically high value because of the market, to use an average and not using the most recent average, because that spike would be in the average, but to use maybe four different cycles and to smooth out that property tax valuation so that people don't see those high increases like we did. Nothing's been decided yet. We're moving towards policy recommendations by the March 15th meeting, and I will continue to keep you updated. So there's a lot of people presenting us with different ideas, homestead exemptions, circuit breakers, which are income-qualified property tax relief, which is similar to what we're doing here in Broomfield already with our senior income tax rebate program for disabled folks and for veterans. So in fact, the commission was very surprised that we'd already taken that lead and we're doing targeted property tax relief here in Broomfield. So any county can do that. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeing no other councilmembers, we will now continue with public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on matters other than the items already listed elsewhere on this evening's agenda. If there was anyone who would like to be heard, please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Thank you for letting me have this opportunity. My name is Janelle Carlson. I am the Communication Director for the Westminster Stake of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. We are the building right across from Paldera Recreation Center, and we have an event coming up that we wanted to make you aware of. Next Wednesday, March 6th, at 7:00, we will have our 24th Annual Teacher Appreciation Night. And in this night, there will be about 30 seniors from this, from the Broomfield area that will give a tribute to the teacher who has made the biggest impact of their life there. And there, our guest speaker will be Ginger Ramsey from Broomfield High School. We will have Sarah Marks from Legacy High School there, as well as the Jefferson Academy Principal and other principals there in the night there, as well as all of the teachers there. Each senior will get up and briefly just give a little bit of that tribute to that teacher up there, and then they will sit down, take a picture together. We will—it's a wonderful night, and we would love if any of you could come. You would be incredibly touched by the heartfelt sincerity of these seniors as they give gratitude to someone who has changed their lives. There'll be many teachers from the community there, again, as well as the seniors and the principals. And we would love—if you—would love to extend the invitation to all of you, as well as to anyone in the community, to be there. I have an invitation for all of you here in the front. It's just my email that if you can make it, if you would like—to—if you would just email me and let me know that, we will have name tags for you as you come in. If you don't get a chance to email me, come anyway if you can. We would love that, and thank you for your time. And could I leave this here to pass it round, an invitation for each of you? If that'd be all right?
You'll just hand them to Councilmember Colm.
Okay. Thank you very much. We hope to see you there.
Thank you for that.
Hi. Thank you for your time tonight. My name's Allison Dronkers. I live in Country Estates, so I'm in Ward 4. I wanted to talk very briefly tonight about the recent issue with the registration for Broomfield Summer Camp. So I am a parent of a six-year-old and a four-year-old. The six-year-old's a first grader at Aspen Creek. And last year, we used BVSD's Summer Camp, but we have to go to Louisville for that because they're bolder. And it's also much more expensive. I think most of you probably know this, but families tend to spend a lot of money on childcare. On average, it's about 27% of their household income. And Broomfield's offering is very reasonably priced, and so therefore very popular. I was well in advance planned. I have my residency. I was logged in. Everything was on my favorites page, and then the website crashed. And I spent about 20 minutes frantically trying to register. Couldn't. Got in the car, drove to Paldera, only to find a line of 20 other parents trying to get their kids registered. Long story short, my kiddo is on the waitlist. So I have two requests of the council tonight to please think about. The first is to look at the B-Rex website. I use it a lot. We take a lot of advantage of the wonderful programs that Broomfield has to offer, but it's painful. My husband works in website development in front user-facing technology, and it's not just me. Like, it's a kind of painful website, even though there are wonderful programs to offer. So the fact that it went down on the—possibly the busiest day of the year, when hundreds of other parents were trying to register, is really disappointing. The second thing is that you would expand the summer camp offering. From what I understand, there are only 30 spots for first graders. That's only about 5% to 10% of the first graders in Broomfield. My kiddo goes to a school where there are 63 first graders. You multiply that out by the number of elementary schools we have and the homeschool. That's only about 5% to 10%, and it's really reasonably priced and a wonderful offering. But to hear that he's ninth on the waitlist when I was there clicking on the button 600 times is really disappointing. So what I would ask is that you—I understand that there are space constraints, there are hiring constraints, but that you look at that and that you reassess, because we are a community of families and children, and a low-cost summer camp option is so important to the families who live here. So thank you for your time.
Hola, muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Richard Rodriguez.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Richard Rodriguez.
Emigrante venezolano.
And I'm a Venezuelan immigrant.
El hecho es que estamos acá en este momento para tratar referente a la inmigración.
And here, we're here to actually talk about immigration.
Somos emigrantes a fuerza mayor. Que todos sabemos acá la situación de nuestro país.
And I'm an immigrant that has been forced because of the situation in my country.
El cual el punto a tocar es referente a permisos de trabajo, ¿verdad? Para no ser carga del país o del estado ayudándonos nosotros en cómo conseguir un permiso de trabajo para no ser carga al estado.
And my point here is about a work permit, so that we will not be a burden on the city or counties, but we can try and get those work permits expedited.
Buen, ya que muchos acá de nosotros, todos los emigrantes, todos, algunos, en su mayoría profesionales, nos gustaría como trabajar de la mano, ejerciendo nuestras profesiones, o quizás en el campo o donde nos puedan ayudar para no estar en situación de calle, ni estar trabajando limpiando vidrio, como se refiere mucho por ahí.
And those of us that are here, many of us are professionals, and we'd like to be able to be doing our professions, or if we have to work in the fields or work somewhere else. But just as so long as we don't have to be out onto the streets, or as you have seen, some of us out there on the streets cleaning windshields.
Nosotros hemos estado limpiando vidrio para poder subsistir o sobrevivir y mandar algo de dinero a nuestra familia.
And we'd like to be able to do this so that we can just subsist and be able to actually send some kind of money back to our families.
Pero también nos hemos visto afectados por la policía colocándonos multas.
And we've also been affected by the police that have been fining us.
En cual si nosotros tenemos una, dos, tres multas, nos dañaría el récord en nuestros papeles migratorios.
And those of us that receive two or three fines that can damage our immigration records and possibilities for that.
Entonces, nos gustaría que nos apoyasen de alguna manera en solucionarnos de cómo conseguir un trabajo.
And what we would like is for you to help us be able to get some kind of work.
Sí, muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maira García. Soy venezolana.
And good afternoon. My name is Maira García, and I'm a Venezuelan.
Soy madre de familia soltera.
And I am a single mother.
Para concretar un poco de lo que habló mi compañero y mi compatriota.
And I'm here to solidify a little bit more about what my colleague and my fellow countrymen have spoken about.
Eh, con respecto a los permisos de trabajo que solo le están dando aquel que entró con cita.
And this is about respect to the work permit. They're only giving those to the people who have come in with an appointment.
Quisiera que tomaran un poco en cuenta o estudiaran aquellas personas que se entregaron. Como en mi caso es que soy madre de familia y tenemos una profesión o estudiamos nuestro país. Quisiera que tuvieran en cuenta un poco eso.
And I'd like to see if they could give some kind of consideration for those of us that are single parents or that actually have professional careers back in our home countries, if there's any way that they could give more consideration on that factor.
De igual manera darle las gracias por esa mano amiga que nos están dando a los emigrantes de una u otra manera.
And also to be—give thanks for that helping hand that you guys—that has been given to us through friends here.
Y si es de su agrado, informarles que es buena esa mano amiga que están dando con los—por lo menos en Denver, con los bancos de comida o casas de refugio, hoteles, como hoteles o carpas que hay de refugio.
And just to inform you, you know, that help has been useful out in Denver with food banks, with hotel and lodging.
Y poderle acotar una pequeña— ¿cómo le explico? Idea que tengo.
And just wanted to share a small idea that I had.
Es de que, por lo menos, si el condado ayuda a todos los emigrantes, por lo menos los refugios con los hoteles como refugio que pagan una cantidad de dinero es demasiado. Solo yo observando que si estudian un poco esa parte, darían como más apoyo en ayudarles con la cita de trabajo. Se emplean. No es necesidad que el condado aplique tanto dinero en los emigrantes, que eso le afecta a todos los condados, o sea, porque quedan como en crisis de dinero.
And really, it is on the regards with the hotels and how they've been paying for that. If focusing on getting us work so that we can be there more helpful out in trying to get money to do things with.
Pudiendo recortar esos recursos en ayudándolos a obtener su carta de empleo de esa manera.
And you could, instead of investing more money into those other resources of lodging, you could invest those resources in trying to help us get jobs.
De igual manera, gracias por la educación que nos está permitiendo a nuestros hijos en las instituciones.
And thank you very much for allowing our children to be able to get education in your institutes.
Muchas gracias por escucharme y disculpe por aquellos emigrantes que de repente no acatan las órdenes o los perjudica a ustedes.
And thank you very much for everything. And I'd like to apologize for those immigrants that are making us look bad and obeying the things that they should be.
Gracias. Una buena noche.
Thank you. Good night.
Hi there. My name is Vee. I wanted to speak here today with my friends who you heard from, because we know that the migrant crisis, the forced migration, mostly from Venezuela but from other South American countries, has been affecting a lot of communities and is definitely affecting folks up here too. And we wanted to come here and bring some expertise and experience with the situation in Denver to kind of educate and inform how we can be doing things better. And so a lot of the feedback that we've gotten from the thousands of migrants that have come through is what she just said, is that a lot of the funding has been going to organizations and much more to staffing these rather than directly to the individuals affected. Folks are really asking for more access to workshops, to information about how they can get their work permits. Like you said, it was a unanimous vote in expediting that process, but for that to be effective, you're going to have to have a lot more workshops that are accessible to folks and being able to go out and meet folks where they are to bring them into those spaces and not have it be something that ends up being very exclusionary or something that folks don't know about and have no way of attending or accessing. Specifically speaking about the folks that I've brought here today, this wonderful woman in front of me is—professionally was a firewoman back in Venezuela and now actually has her work permit and just received it. And so is looking for work and is eager to contribute to the community. And I know that we heard from—I think it was Senator Hickenlooper that the cities need to be doing more individually in terms of finding ways to employ a lot of folks as city workers. And so here's someone who has the correct permit, who would love to be able to contribute and really add a lot of merit and experience to your workforce. And then I also have this single mom who's been speaking, and she has a four-month-old child and a son who's 11, who's an incredible brother to his younger sister. And they're very much struggling to find a place where they can be supported and continue to grow. He's excited about school. He wants to get back out onto the soccer field and get to know other kids. And so if there's opportunities that we have to connect families to other families and create a really strong program for people that are wanting to contribute, are wanting to connect with these folks, I can tell you, it's an incredible experience. I personally, I've taken in a family with a one-year-old and a five-year-old. And at the end of the day, they're the most adorable and sweetest people to come home to. And we're able to work together and create those connections. So I'd really hope that you guys reach out, specifically to the people who are experiencing this firsthand, and get a lot of this feedback and understand how things can be made better so that we can integrate these folks into our community, because they're eager newcomers and they're glad to be here. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Casteada and councilmembers. My name is Tracy DiLorenzo. I'm from Denver, District 9. I wanted to thank you for having me here tonight as you head into the focus session that you're having this weekend. I particularly wanted to speak to the session you will have on learning what others have done to become an immigrant-friendly city. Many people throw around that word sanctuary city, non-sanctuary city, even though there's no legal definition of those terms. I believe in cities that are immigrant-friendly. My ancestors entered the US at Ellis Island. I'm Italian. Unless your heritage is Native American, it's likely your ancestors were immigrants as well. I've learned that council members here in Broomfield have received multiple threatening emails from those unfriendly towards our newcomer population. It deeply saddens me that newcomers themselves have been dehumanized and re-traumatized. It is reassuring, however, to learn of the staff and volunteers here in Broomfield that have been volunteering their time to learn and help our immigrant population as they muddle through the application process for work authorization. I'm thankful this council advocates for expediting work authorization and council members like Heidi Henkel. Heidi has on more than one occasion supported immigrant work on the ground in Denver, in Douglas County, and recently in DC. My personal intro to all this began in October of 23 after hearing about a heavy newcomer presence at the Western Mudderton in Denver. Fast forward 12 Facebook groups later, Denver and surrounding cities organized to advocate for newcomer communities cropping up in hotel shelters, congregate shelters, and encampments. Thousands of concerned citizens like myself have jumped in to meet the basic needs, food trains, donation procurement, one-on-one sponsorship, job development, homeland security documentation, immigration, court appearances, on and on. I don't see my time. Okay. We meet in small groups and brainstorm. We call and write to our electeds on a city, state, and federal level. We hold peaceful rallies at our state capitol alongside our newcomer friends. We liaise with the mayor's office, faith-based leadership, nonprofit orgs. We raise money. We seek out host families. We hear of a dire need, we meet that need. But most importantly, we include the voices and the goals of the newcomers themselves. At the end of the day, we need to work as a region and as a city and county and apply for grant dollars to assist in the efforts to be sure immigrants know they are welcome, just like they do in Daytona, Ohio. In closing, I applaud the efforts in Broomfield and the council for stepping up where others are closing their ins. Broomfield is a place of peace and friendship, and I will stand alongside you as you explore how you can be exclusive to those fleeing violence in their own countries like Afghanistan, Ukraine, Venezuela, and more. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Susan Hall. I live at 2636 West 134th Circle here in Broomfield. I have three kids that have graduated from Adams County Schools. I am a retired substitute teacher. I do have a teaching license, but I mostly did substituting in this area and in Denver. I am a third generation at least of Colorado, and I have come today for a very important and heavy issue. And that is the issue of, I'd like to see you have a resolution about the conflict in Palestine and Israel. There's five points I'd like to see you consider. And the first one, of course, is a permanent ceasefire. Now, some people say, well, they have the right to defend themselves. But does one army have the right to defend another country that does not have an army? That is surrounding the people? I don't think so. Number two, an end to the occupation of Palestinian people, land and resources, which has prohibited them from self-determination. That's been a very important part in our country. And I do encourage you to watch the International Court of Justice because everyone but the United States and UK have agreed to what I'm asking for today. They've asked actually Israel over and over to see to some of these things. The theft of land, the, they cannot go in and out of their own country. And right now, they're going to be starving. If you ask for a ceasefire, and I know you can't do it because you're a city. Yes, but at least 40 cities in the United States have had people come forward in their city councils. Of course, not that many have passed it, but it has come forth. And I came forth because I thought I can use my freedom of speech. And I'm sure that those in Holocaust would have appreciated some freedom of speech. I would encourage you to read Norman Finkelstein. Both of his parents were in the concentration camp. And he has been standing up for the Palestinians his entire life. He's probably about as old as I am, and I'm not gonna tell you how old that is. I would like to have a, ah, one thing that would truly help is if we stop giving the billion dollars. We've probably given $100 billion to Israel since its formation. It was formed under the UK because during the time that they were collecting their empire, so to speak, and had different colonies. They encouraged people from all over Europe that were Zionist mostly to come to Palestine. Palestine was not an empty country when they encouraged them to go. And they did come there. There were Jewish people that lived there.
Ms. Hall, your three minutes are up. If you'll wrap up your last thought, please.
Okay, the last thought I have is also there should not be gifts going from Israel to our politicians. And you can look it up online. Almost every politician, well, the politicians for sure in Colorado, receive like $30,000 to $100,000. That money comes back as gifts to our politicians. And it makes a difference in how they decide. I ask you at least to decide for a ceasefire.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Thank you, council members, mayor, and city leadership for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Shalinda and I live in Ward Five. I heard that you're all discussing being an immigrant-friendly city at your upcoming focus session. I'm here in support of the effort as many of us in Broomfield are already helping. Immigrants in Denver and Aurora and other cities can't do this work alone. Nearly 36,000 migrants have been shipped to Denver over the past year. Many of them claiming asylum after crossing the U.S.-Mexico border in Texas. In December alone, 144 buses dropped off migrants in Denver at the pace of 100 to 200 people per day. These people, mostly Venezuelans, were deposited without coordination with the city, not at or near any intake centers, not during business hours, and stripped of their possessions, only being allowed to have the clothes on their backs. Arriving migrants were in shorts, t-shirts, and flip-flops. Those that did have shoes had their shoelaces removed due to safety concerns. No diapers or wipes for the babies, no food for the children. And many, many, many were undernourished and hungry of all ages. Denver was overwhelmed. City services, nonprofits, churches, and people sprang into action to help. With the housing shortage in Denver, additional short-term housing was provided at Sleep Inn and Comfort Inn on Tower Road. Some rooms had 15 per room, but they were safe and out of the elements. These thousands of people, mostly children, were too far away from any support and there was no money to ride the buses to Denver to get the support they needed. This is where we came in. For the last 12 weeks, my group and many others from Broomfield have sprung into action supporting the people on Tower Road. We have taken 10 trips with up to four vans and SUVs filled to the top. We've delivered at least 500 coats through donation drives of used coats, inspecting, washing, sorting in size, and purchased new ones to supplement gender and size needs. Hundreds of jackets, pullovers, sweaters, and hoodies for those that we didn't have a coat for until we had one. Thousands of hats, gloves, and scarves. Clothing for 1,000 people, all washed, inspected with care. Clothing them as we would our own families. Thousands of snack bags to supplement the meager food allotment. Diapers, wipes, baby medicines, over-the-counter medicines, including items for chickenpox raging through the hotels. 300 care kits consisting of a drawstring bag filled with essential items and emergency supplies along with a packet of local immigration and asylum help for Denver in Spanish.
Shalinda, your three minutes are up. If you'll wrap up your last thought, please.
Okay. The only other, all the other Broomfield Moms groups have collected and distributed to. I've heard too many times the Broomfield way. I'm so very hopeful that what it means is kindness, compassion, and empathy for those in need. We already are an immigrant-friendly city, but it needs to be reflected on our website, in our leadership, and it's our patriotic duty as many of us came from immigrant backgrounds also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Elena Johnson. Thank you, mayor, council, and staff leadership. I am 10 years old and I live in Ward Five. I've helped the Venezuelan migrants in many ways. I started a donation program at my schools, collecting baby items, clothes, coats, toys, and snacks. I've decided to go with my grandma multiple Sundays to help distribute items to the Venezuelans. My favorite part is to see the kid's spirit light up after giving them a toy. Now, let's take a second back to be grateful for what we have. Also, I would like to say if we can do more, then I definitely think we should. Finally, thank you for your time.
I'm finally taller than somebody.
Good evening. I'm Sandy Anderson and I live in Ward Four. Thank you, mayor, council, staff leadership for inviting public comments for items not on the agenda this evening. I read in the Broomfield City Update that there was an upcoming focus session that's exploring how we could be an immigrant-friendly city. It's just crazy to me that the word immigrant can draw so much hate, racism, and nimbyism, especially unless you're our Native American, you are an immigrant, or your ancestors were. No apologies for my editorial comments. Over the 23 years I've lived in Broomfield, I'm delighted to see that our city has prioritized diversity, equity, inclusion, and access to services over the last eight years. I'm also thankful for a council that supports expediting work authorization for our newcomers in the, as the federal system is way too slow. I've been supporting with the other Broomfield Moms the hotels on Tower Road. When people think of hotels, they're envisioning how they go on vacation. This is not that. There are up to 15 people per room. Yes, they are out of the elements and safe, but this is not your hotel experience. They receive twice a day food rations that keep them from starving but not thriving. As over 36,000 people were bussed here by Governor Abbott for his performative art, I consider his efforts human trafficking. Not in the way that you would typically, you know, define human trafficking, but because of the political contributions and supports he gets for that. Consider entering our country, completing your interview, receiving your paperwork, and the date for your hearing and being asked by a person of authority, usually in a uniform and with weaponry, not understanding that our police officers pledge to serve and support the public. To sign here, get on a bus, relinquish all of your possessions, except the clothes on your back, and go wherever that bus is going. It's just inhumane. These immigrant migrant humans are dropped off without coordination, without the ability to be welcomed or provided with intake, without winter clothes, without food, without shelter, without clothes. Others have spoken tonight on the many trips they've taken to provide essentials to live in our environment for the winter. But let me leave you with one thought. As we completed our coats, hats, and gloves distribution, a man came over to me for winter outdoor wear. We had none left. I do not speak Spanish, but I understood what he was asking for: gloves. All I had was a dollar store pair of knit gloves on my hands. I offered them to him and he hand-signaled yes. And then with gratitude and blessings to me, he accepted my dollar store pair of knit gloves. Truly think about what can be done. What if everyone provided support of a dollar or $5? What creative ways can we help this man-made humanitarian need in our state? We have so much, so very much, and you all have the intelligence and ability to make a difference. I hope you take it. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and esteemed council members for letting us speak freely here today. My name is Shaz Mina Filka and I am resident of Broomfield in Ward Five. I came to the United States at the age of five as an asylum-seeking immigrant. So I know what it's like to be in these people's shoes. I did not speak English and I did not have anything. And I encourage you all to continue to advocate for Broomfield to be an immigrant-friendly community. I studied hard in school. My father was a diesel mechanic. My mother cleaned houses. And I was the first person in my family to go to college. I am now a successful businesswoman that pays an enormous amount in taxes. And I know that all of these people have come here in the hopes that their children could have a better life, just like I did. So again, I encourage you to continue to support Broomfield as an immigrant sanctuary city and provide these people the opportunity to, for their children to grow and prosper and live the American dream. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Hall. I'm a resident of Westlake for about 40 years. And I do want to talk about the Israeli conflict, but it seemed like a strange topic for a city council. I mean, what can, what can we do here to affect a change there? But what is our recourse? I mean, our government is oblivious to the cries of the people and of the world for a ceasefire. And our taxes are paying for this slaughter, which makes us complicit. And many cities across the country have passed resolutions for a ceasefire, including Chicago, the largest, and many others here in Colorado. Glenwood Springs recently passed a resolution. And I'm not sure, but I believe Arbatah may have done the same. I don't know that for sure yet, but passing a resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire and humanitarian aid to Gaza. So I'm asking that the city consider passing a resolution for an immediate ceasefire and the end of U.S. aid to Israel. And if nothing else, to tell Washington, not in our name.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Martin Dormesh. I live in the Birch neighborhood and serve as a local minister here through my nonprofit advocacy project, Everyday Epics. And I would like to add my voice to those of my neighbors calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire as well in Gaza. In light of recent events and pronouncements out of Denver, Lakewood, and elsewhere, I'd also like to speak briefly tonight on immigration. Although a lot has been said lately about keeping certain people out of our communities, I would like to recall our attention to a crucial aspect of the world's great faith traditions, including mine. That is the practice of welcoming the stranger, recognizing their essential humanity, and making room for them in the proverbial inn. Sadly, throughout our history, we have all too often ignored these better angels of our nature and instead built an economy on slave labor, forcibly displaced many hundreds of indigenous nations, and created vast wealth from the entitlement of their land. Having used disease, broken treaties, and military conquests to settle and colonize the land of others, our brand of civilization has been characterized by widespread suspicion of immigrants and discriminatory policies and practices directed against successive waves of immigrant newcomers, including Quakers, Catholics, Jews, and Muslims, as well as people from Ireland, Italy, Poland, Germany, China, Mexico, Japan, Vietnam, and most recently, people from Afghanistan, the Ukraine, Mauritania, and Venezuela. What's more, our foreign policies have contributed and continue to contribute to the economic and political instability driving people to our shores and borders. Here in Broomfield, the insidious and dehumanizing nativist ego has taken several racist and classist forms. In the mid-20th century, for example, the local Chamber of Commerce advertised Broomfield as 100% white. And at the end of the 20th century and beginning of the 21st, civic leaders here intentionally zoned for affluence. As someone who attempts to follow God and the way of Jesus, I would remind us all that the Holy Family, having escaped the murderous intentions of King Herod, were themselves immigrant newcomers in Egypt for a time. Welcoming the stranger may require planning, and it may mean re-envisioning our collective priorities. But excluding those we are tempted to see as the other in order to hoard the benefits of our community for ourselves is not the way. Each and every immigrant newcomer is made in the image of God and should be treated as such, and their impending arrival prepared for and held sacred, not least because every one of us, with the exception of people indigenous to this land, also have an immigrant newcomer story in our family tree. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Sean Miller. I'm with the Eagle Trace neighborhood and representing my wife and 10-year-old daughter. So, council, mayor, thank you for your time today. And thank you for wrestling with the hard issues that a lot of us don't want to deal with. So, our story. In December of 2022, my wife called me at the end of a long day and said, hey, I'm bringing home seven Venezuelans. A little bit of a shock, and I hopped out of the bath and put some clothes on and then started cooking some food. And over the course of 12 months, we ended up welcoming 12 different asylum seekers from Venezuela into the house, some of whom stayed for a couple of weeks, some of whom stayed for a couple of months or longer. We still have one woman who's been with us today. I'm not asking you for a specific policy position or outcome from this conversation. I really want to thank you for just being involved in this subject. I know it's a, it's a difficult one because as an American, I know we need a border. I know that the donation stands with that. And I also believe that we have a responsibility to our brothers and sisters in this time of crisis. So I just want to thank you for being So I just want to thank you for being involved, for being a welcoming community, and for taking pragmatic positions on behalf of the community, right? As I look at our situation as a community, I know that there are older adults that need services, there are people who are disabled who need help, our community can use aid, and the first word universally that came out of the mouths of all of the asylum seekers who came to us was work. I want to help. I want to contribute. I want to stand on my own two feet. So thank you for your time today and for your service to the community.
My name's Axana Kovalenko. I would like to thank Mayor, Council, and staff for having us all here and allowing us to share our stories and share our needs. I am Ukrainian refugee, came here twenty-five years ago, didn't speak English, didn't drive a car, had a family, little kids. Today, for last two years now, we have, me and my fiance, there are Tom, we have a family of six that we took on into our home, just like the gentleman before me mentioned, brought them in, housed them, and still, we call ourselves cultural guides, but we basically drivers, therapists, chefs, and probation officers, and so on. The kids are two five-year-olds, fifteen-year-old, and a nineteen-year-old. So stories are amazing. We have kids in school. The fifteen-year-old just got a scholarship to Regis University through Broomfield Robotics Club. The nineteen-year-old is in college. The little boys are learning English, taking swimming lessons that are provided through government funding. So in short, I would like to thank Broomfield for being so welcoming. I think if I go in any other county, I brag about Broomfield and how well Broomfield does. I mean, it's in Broomfield Fish, it's all the churches around us. People have called, visited, dropped off things at our porch that we had Genius sign up for. We haven't purchased the thing. It was given and donated, the furniture, the clothing. So the community is amazing, and I couldn't be more thankful for what you all doing and the efforts that you put in to provide resources through Broomfield Benefits Office, through WIC, through, I mean, you name it. All the resettlement agencies have been very supportive, delayed partially because we took on Ukrainians as sponsors, we took on every single thing that probably is not done for the next group that is coming in. So now, we're turning around and helping other families and getting involved with other Ukrainian families, and if there is a need that we need to volunteer in, we are welcome to do that. So thank you for actually being a refugee-friendly and welcoming city and council, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I'm Ellen Thorp. I live in Ward Five. Thank you to my neighbors for allowing me to back clean up. I have children who attend high school in Broomfield. We moved here ten years ago from the East Coast. For my day job, I work in public affairs for the construction and manufacturing industries. I am highly knowledgeable about the labor shortage and workforce development issues in the United States. I'm better known as the mom of Esther and Ruthie Thorpe, the wife of the Meridian Elementary Horse Mascot Thunder, shh, don't tell anyone, and as the owner of Broomfield Colorado Moms, a Facebook group of over 5,000 members. In early December, I was really shocked to learn about the humanitarian crisis that was occurring in Denver, whereby mid-January 2024, our state has received over 45,000 newcomers, primarily from Venezuela and other South American countries. I am here to ask you to start thinking about how Broomfield can help. As Americans, it is an honor to help newcomers to our country, to our state, and to our city, and if you don't think it's an honor, you should. Over the past few weeks, I've spoken with families, coordinated several donation efforts, and my children and I have personally distributed goods and donations totaling over $1,200 to relief efforts for our newcomers. And in case you're wondering, many times when I start talking about this issue, someone always says, well, that's great, you're helping everybody from somewhere else. What do you do to help people who are already here? So if you're thinking that in your head, here's my answer. We do help those who are already here. We help Broomfield Fish, Precious Child, Hope House, which is a home for single mothers in Arvada. In addition, we house a single mother and her toddler in our home for the past eight months while she gets back on her feet. So don't ask me if I'm only helping the immigrants. Each of my teenage daughters has completed over 150 hours of community service in the past three years. Just because we help one group doesn't mean that we can't help others. You know, I came prepared with some statistics about why America needs immigrants, our declining replacement rate, and really, just from an economic perspective, how much we need immigrants. In Colorado alone, we have created 200,000 jobs every year since the year 2012, and 2023 is expected to be even higher when those numbers are released next month. So here's what I'd like you to think about. I'd like you to think about creating a public-private charitable partnership that would work together to figure out how to help all of the newcomers to Colorado and to Broomfield. From my experience, everyone, almost everyone wants to help, but they aren't quite sure what to do, and we need Broomfield to create the framework so that everyone can help in the way that they say fit, and that we can make a difference so that these newcomers learn English, put their children in school, receive their work authorizations, and become Americans who love our country just as much as every one of us does. We all have that shared value, and we want to share that value with the newcomers as well. Thank you so much for your time tonight and for creating this wonderful city and county to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we do not have anybody joining online. So next, we have, first under reports is the City Manager Hoffman is going to provide council with an update on the event-centered demolition timeline.
Thank you, and this is a very brief, there's no slide, I just wanted to give you a snapshot. We're going to have additional information coming on March 27th, where Katie, Ms. Allen, our city-county engineer, will provide additional information. So we're in the process of an RFQ, which is a request for, we have questions that we have going out. So if council will remember, we didn't want a simple RFP of just demolishing the building. We wanted the standalone, what's the standard rate of recycling? And what would it be from a time perspective, impact to the community perspective, and dollar perspective to increase that level? So we're going to come back with three different options for council, including those three categories. So once we get the RFQ from businesses that are able to provide those additional caveats, interestingly enough, many that do this work don't have various tiers. So they don't say, for this, we're going to do, for eighty percent, it's going to cost this, for ninety percent, it's going to cost this. It's kind of the all-or-nothing perspective. So we hope by April 2024 to have some of that information back. We're looking at pre-construction activities. Obviously, this is, it's an enormous lift. We need to ensure that there's plenty of notice going out to Arista, the businesses, as well as the residents, obviously. So we plan to come back to present those demolition options in early fall. We anticipate council's approval, because we'll have to have two readings, of course, that you all will select the company by September, and then the plans will be executed if all goes according to these timelines. By the end of 2024, early 2025, we'll be in the deconstruction mode. And all of this will be on the Broomfield Voice tomorrow. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Manager Hoffman. We will now proceed with public comments, starting with in-person. Is there anyone who would like to be heard? Please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone on the phone?
For seven A.
Okay. All right, so no one is on the phone for this comment, so we turn to council members. Questions and comments from council are next. Are there any questions or comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, thank you for the update this evening. Next under reports is legislative updates. Council has a copy of the legislative update memo, which I'll ask Ruth Aponte from Aponte Abusam to summarize. Ruth, will you please come forward to the podium?
Evening, everyone. Can you all hear me okay? All right. Well, first, thank you so much. This is, I think, the first opportunity that our team has had to present to the council, and we appreciate this. We're trying to stand in for your amazing staff, Danae Bruillard, and she's, I think, prepared us very well for this presentation, but we may occasionally need to phone a friend with the rest of your wonderful staff. So with that, and also, I want to introduce my colleague, Julia Scanlon, who will join us a little bit later to talk about some of the bills as well. So just before we dive into these, and there's quite a bit here, we did want to remind you that we're almost halfway through the legislative session. This is, tomorrow marks the 50th day. We, of course, go for 120 days by Colorado's Constitution, so not that we're counting, but we're almost halfway, and we already have 515 bills that have been introduced. This is over 100 more than was introduced this time last year. We are being told that, you know, don't get too excited about that, it's just that they're coming sooner, it's not that there's going to be 100 more. I have it on good authority that that's going to make us all a lot more productive. So with that, I guess we can go ahead into the next slide, please. And we are planning to talk with you about several key issues that you have all been following, including development, land use, infrastructure, housing, ozone-related bills, firearms, and public safety issues. And then, at the end of the evening, my understanding is that you're all going to have the opportunity to discuss and take some positions on these bills. And we also understand that you will hold questions until the end of our presentation. So we usually remind us, please, we're more used to asking questions as we go, but we absolutely will have questions for you at the end. So next slide, please. We're going to start off, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Keep going, you're fine.
We're going to start off with development, land use, infrastructure, and housing, again, another very, very large focus area down at the Capitol this year. Of course, the council was quite involved last session with Senate Bill 213, which was an omnibus land use reform bill that did not pass last session, and this year has come back. The Paul's administration has brought several of those concepts back, but in a variety of different bills. And so we are following all those bills and want to inform you about them this evening. Next slide, please. The first bill is one that has gotten much, much attention over the fall and into the beginning of this session, and that is now House Bill 1313, dealing with Housing and Transit Oriented Communities, or TOC. And this bill is very involved. It creates a category of local government areas that are titled Transit Oriented Communities, and then requires that within those TOCs, there is a need for the county or city to meet a housing opportunity goal or a HOG, and that is calculated, as you can see here, by forty dwelling units per acres. Municipalities must adjust your zoning to accommodate for this, and it only allows for administrative review processes of residential projects for five acres or less in this transit area. If it does not meet, if the transit-oriented community does not meet the housing opportunity goals, then there are consequences of that. And the most importantly is that the city and county would lose the access to the Highway Users Fund, and otherwise known as HUTF. In addition, the Department of Local Affairs, or DOLA, may seek an injunction to require that the municipality comply with the HOG goals. So, you know, this is obviously pretty far-reaching, I think, in terms of your authority of what you can already do currently and how the state is directing you to do something otherwise, potentially. So next slide, please. And this is one where I may need to turn to Manager Hoffman on this, but essentially, this was what your staff provided for you to truly understand what it might mean for Broomfield in terms of the acreage and how many houses or housing units would need to be in there, and the zoning capacity. So I don't know if you want to make any comments on this particular slide, Manager Hoffman?
I think that the key area, and the mayor and Mayor Protem and I have been discussing this significantly, it really comes down to three things. And first and foremost, it's the, anytime you have density, your need to have a very different kind of infrastructure is necessary. So between the infrastructure and those costs of infrastructure, there's a trade-off for various components of density. Based on the formula that is in the bill currently, there is, it's not a gap, but it's a chasm between what they want to have happen in the bill and what we're actually capable of supporting. And when I say supporting, I don't mean we have the infrastructure established, nor have we done any of the deep work with the water. But just from a density perspective, only in the transit-oriented corridor, which is essentially the Arista neighborhood, the gap, as you can see here, pretty clear, would be about 10,000 units.
Thank you, thank you. And again, we can take some more questions on this, if you'd like, at the end here. So I should also share with you that Broomfield is working within your various local government membership organizations to analyze this bill. Your amazing staff have been providing input to those organizations, and they are working collaboratively to raise up some questions and concerns to the sponsors and the administration. And those groups have united, come together to present several questions, and this includes the Colorado Municipal League, Colorado Counties Inc., Colorado Counties and Commissioners Acting Together, CC4CA, Dr. Cog, and the Metro Mayor's Caucus. So you all touch on these organizations in various capacities and do know that they are all working very closely together to communicate to the sponsors and the administration a lot of questions about this bill.
Ms. Aponte, before you continue, the governor's office has reached out, the mayor and Ms. Burtonzetti, and I will be participating in a call tomorrow, Thursday, either tomorrow or Thursday, to do Thursday morning for additional follow-up. And to your point, Ms. Aponte, there isn't any group in the state of Colorado that is not actively engaged in this bill. So the questions are universal, they're across the board, there's a lot of eyes on it, there's a lot of fingers, a lot of cooks in this kitchen.
All right, thank you. Next slide, please. So your staff has identified several top issues for you to take a look at, and again, these have all been shared with those groups that I just mentioned, and I know will be shared in know will be shared in the meeting that is just with Broomfield on Thursday. The first of these is the use of a quote "stick" that is the highway, the withholding of the Highway Users Tax Fund. Again, if the HOG is not met within the transit-oriented community, these funds will be withheld. And for Broomfield, that's around $2 million each year. These are state, are funds that are provided to the local governments for maintenance of our roads, to keep them safe, and to participate as they, you know, as they are required to by statute with us in addressing those needs that we have for our infrastructure. So this could represent a potential loss for the city, and we currently, of course, depend on those revenues. I know that there's been some questions around if this is even legal, if that's something that's allowed under the Constitution and under the way in which local governments are set up, and just do know that that is a question that has been raised and will be put forward and discussed with the sponsors and the administration. So I think there's an argument that it's not, and that will be presented as part of the debate. Next slide, please. Other concerns are around preemption. And again, this bill does require Broomfield to meet these minimum requirements and overrides your local processes in many situations. It removes the opportunity for local public engagement, as we've seen here tonight, which was very inspiring, I might say, that really this now is just a, you know, you're going to do it. There's really not the place for you to talk with your community about how it should be done and what makes most sense for you as a city. And in addition, it has the, again, it oversteps into areas where local governments have traditionally controlled zoning and land use decisions, and puts in place instead a statewide statutory minimum. Next slide, please. And then the other large concern is around an unfunded mandate, that, again, there is going to be costs associated with compliance with this bill, whether it be your staff time, or the need to include additional infrastructure components that are going to be having to, Broomfield will have to pay for. And so there's a lot of concern around, you know, where's the revenue? There is 35 million in the bill, but is that enough to really support all of the local governments that are covered by the bill and your, and your ability to meet the requirements of the bill? And so if it's not, then, of course, it becomes incumbent upon you all to make up that difference. So that is House Bill 1313. Next, oh, and I should say, too, that it is up next Wednesday, March 6. It will be in the House Transportation and Local Government Committee. So it's coming up very quickly here. Next slide, please. Other bills in this area include House Bill 10007, and this one would prohibit a jurisdiction from having occupancy limits. And the idea here is really, again, looking at the housing crisis that we have in the state, it would be to allow additional people to share housing and disallow you as a municipality to say, you know, you can only have an X number of people per square footage. And it is intended to respect non-traditional families and, and again, allow for some living sharing that's maybe not allowed under current jurisdictions. Evidently, we are going to need to take a look at how this squares with our current policies. So that is 1007. House Bill 1308 is, I guess we'd call it maybe a cleanup bill, and this one is coming from the administration, the Department of Local Affairs, Division of Housing. The goal here is really to take a look at, we've now had so many housing programs passed, Proposition 123, of course, on the statewide level. We've also had federal dollars, ARPA funds coming in, there's state programs, and the idea here is to really look at those and see how to make them more streamlined, more efficient, and more importantly, to make it easier for you all to apply for them. And so, you know, the staff is, your staff has said this actually could increase our competitiveness and our ability to capture some of these funds for the programs. I also should note importantly that it makes, it makes it more realistic for jurisdictions to meet the 3% growth housing requirements of Proposition 123, which has been a concern. So that is part of that bill as well. Okay, next page, please. Next slide. House Bill 1304 deals with minimum parking requirements, and essentially, it prohibits a county or municipality from enforcing minimum parking requirements. And, you know, therefore, the question is, how will you accommodate for parking with growth and with expansion? It is unclear how this fits, frankly, with the rest of the housing package that is being brought forward. This is a bit of a standalone bill. It does have one sponsor in common, but otherwise, it's a bit of a, I guess, running on a tangential track. And so, for example, if 1313 passed, how would this bill be embedded with that? I think the end of it is that it's going to reduce the types of parking that are available. And, you know, again, the policy goal here from the sponsors is to have people use public transit and not have us rely so much on our vehicles and therefore not need as much parking. Okay, next slide, please. House Bill 1152 is, I think, in committee as we speak. Are they still at it? Yeah, they're still at it at the State House, debating House Bill 1152. This one essentially requires for jurisdictions to allow, one, ADU, or accessory dwelling unit per a single-family home. And it also overrides, I should say importantly for Broomfield, it overrides the HOA ability to basically say, no, we don't want ADUs in an HOA. That is not allowed by state law anymore, and HOA would have to accept ADUs. So again, we know you already have a policy in this space, but it may need to be adapted pending the outcome of this legislation. And then actually, Senate Bill 154, we just did another check on it, and it, it's thought of as more of the rural ADU bill. It does not apply to city and counties. So, sorry about that. That was our bad, but I would say no need to worry about 154. Okay, next slide, please. All right. So this whole area, we're now moving into the debate around construction defect reform. And so the next four bills that I'm going to talk with you about are in that space. And I would just say, I guess, as preference to all of this, that this is a very controversial topic. You probably all know that, but, you know, there's sort of two schools of thought that are being presented at the State House. One is that there has been extensive litigation around particularly, you know, high condo units, or I should say tall condominium projects, and that that litigation is, has created an extraordinary chilling effect on the development of these projects, which are really seen as entry-level homes and/or retirement homes for our citizens. And because they're not being built, they're not available, it's causing a tremendous housing crunch. So that is definitely one view of, you know, we got to do something about this litigation and this chilling on the development of these projects. The other perspective on this is that, you know, actually, this is a bit of a cynical attempt by interested, you know, stakeholders to take advantage of our housing crisis and contract people's right to get redressed if they've had a construction defect in what is arguably the single largest investment that somebody makes, your home. So just be aware, these two sort of schools of thought are down there, and they're presented in these bills that we are going to be talking about. House Bill 1083 is a bill to study liability insurance. And again, you know, just unpeel it a little bit more. The argument is that there are, the lawsuits are creating very high insurance rates, which therefore make it untenable for developers to do these projects. And so the thinking behind 1083 is, well, let's take a look at those insurance products. What exactly is, let's look into, quote, "the black box." How are these insurance companies arriving at these rates, and what exactly is driving them to be so costly? And, you know, the flip side of that is, this is challenging to access this information. A lot of this is in settlements between two parties, or it is auxiliary lawsuits that are associated but not exactly on point. And so this bill is trying to uncover that to get to what is sort of the heart of one of the arguments around construction defect reform. Then 1230 is a bill that is coming from primarily social justice groups, or I guess I'd say non-traditional housing groups. And it is more in the camp of these, you know, we need to protect consumers more when they've got a defect. It does three key things. It increases the statute of limitation for a homeowner to pursue a suit from six years to 10. The idea being it might not identify a defect until that time. It allows for a claim for either a physical, you know, the actual physical, or even the root cause of a defect, and so allows an owner to have more options in terms of their right to redress. And then it voids as public policy. So in other words, the state law would not allow any contractual provisions that limit a homeowner's ability to seek redress. And that could be either in a contract with a developer or an HOA document. Again, you know, one that we're going to need to do a bit of analysis on in terms of what we think about it. Next slide, please. So Senate Bill 106 is coming from the developer community, the business community, and again, I would say more traditional housing groups. It would modify the current statute to allow what is called a right to remedy. Then the thinking here being, if a developer is told this is, has a major defect, the, they would be able to say, hey, I hear that, I want to step in and remedy it myself, and then that would put a stop on the lawsuit process until that developer could make right or say, I don't want to make right. It also increases the threshold for which a HOA can pursue a lawsuit from a simple majority to two-thirds, so making it a higher bar for HOAs to pursue construction defect lawsuits. And then additionally, it also says, again, in the realm of the HOAs, that they must, it must be a defect that affects either the HOA, so shared, you know, common elements, or the entire, all the members of the HOA. So one unit could not, if there was just a defect in one unit, it could not go forward with a lawsuit. And then lastly, in this space, Senate Bill 112 is a bill that frankly has similar elements to Senate Bill 106, and this measure is sponsored by Republicans. So the thinking, because it's a Democratic majority, is that probably elements, these elements will be folded into Senate Bill 106. It also has the two-thirds threshold, and then it does some more work around waivers and construction professionals' liability, et cetera. All right. That are the, those are the big-ticket items on housing and land use, and I will turn it over to my colleague, Julia, to talk with you about ozone. So next slide, please.
Thank you. Slightly taller than Ruth. Sorry. Hi, everybody. Nice to see you all this evening. Kind of a quick picture before we go into the next slide on where we're coming at for the ozone bill package. A quick reminder, last legislative session, you probably got a similar briefing from us on ozone air quality bills that were come, that were coming forward from the environmental community. Those came to heads with the governor's office, and ultimately, they did not land on a negotiated bill package there at the very end of session. So a lot of these concepts were discussed and debated last year. What ended up happening was an entire interim committee met over the summer. They didn't have bill drafting authority, but what they did have was several stakeholder meetings with members of the public, experts, legislators, all discussing ozone air quality standards in the state, lots of nonpartisan, and I would say partisan, conversations in those meetings. What developed out of those conversations, specifically from an ozone air quality coalition of environmentalists, local government groups, impacted citizens, is the three bills in the package we're going to talk about. There's also a couple other bills in this space generally that might be of interest to council. So that's where it's all sort of coming from. I will say, just to kind of paint the picture, what we're hearing anecdotally, the bills just got dropped last week. One is already scheduled for next week, but we know that there's similar concerns coming out of the Paul's administration, and then obviously, not surprisingly, lots of opposition from the oil and gas industry. So all the problems that existed last year kind of are continuing to exist this year. The one big difference is the bills are dropping earlier in session. It's still February. Last year, they were coming end of March, early April, if that. Some were coming at the end of April, so there's a lot more time in the building for discussion, amendments, and changes. Intentionally, also, the Ozone Air Quality Coalition has split up the bills between chambers, the thought there being, you know, there's not, all the bills aren't going to go to one committee at one time and just get axed. So they're in a couple different states of play, so the longevity of them in the process is probably higher naturally. If we want to go ahead and go to the next slide. So we'll start off with House Bill, sorry, Senate Bill 165, which is the Air Quality Improvements Bill. This one is going to be led by folks over in our neck of the woods. We've got on it Senators Priola and Cutter, and then Representatives Rutenal and Garcia. Without getting too in the weeds in terms of the problem, I expect councils, you live in this community, you probably are very aware of the non-obtainment area, so this one's specifically looking at improvements to the air quality long term. The big things that council should note about what this bill does, it requires a pause on oil and gas production activities during ozone season times. That's typically in the late summer, I think, July, August. This pauses on oil and gas development during those times, no production. They have listed May through September, exceptions for all-electric equipment. Again, this is maybe one where there'll be some debate over, is it all the way through May, through September, or is it, you know, one particular month? But as introduced, it's a full stop in production from May through September. Other things that council might want to know about this bill, it's codifying some language that the governor's office has already put out around NOx admissions, which is nitrous oxide emissions. I will say, please give us grace later with questions around the technical aspects. I only know what I know. But it's, the governor's already put out some admissions reductions directives around NOx admissions, so it codifies what they've already put out and requires an emission reduction of 50% for NOx by 2030. And then it's got a couple other reporting requirements for CDPHE and the ECMC. So that's all kind of one big package that they're trying to all be around air quality improvements. The next one is Senate Bill 166, which is air quality enforcement. This one is specifically looking at particularly repeat offenders. I will say, this is more coming out of like Suncor and particular conversations that have happened with that community, and some repeat violations that they've found there. Big things to note for impacts to Broomfield, this gives local jurisdictions more authority around fines. It has a repeat offenders for more than five times in three years. It increases the fines for repeat offenders, and that's all just due to at least current perception for folks running the bill and supporters, that right now, fines can just be accepted by oil and gas companies, so the current model doesn't actually have enforcement enough to deter bad practices. That's kind of the key things there. And then I think we can move on to the next slide. Brilliant. And the last one is House Bill, that's part of the air quality package, is House Bill 1330. This one's already scheduled for next week, March 7, in committee, so it'll be the first of the bill packages in front of the legislature. Kind of the big thing on this one, without getting too far into the weeds, and your wonderful staff has been reading and digesting these, I should also point out, they only got introduced formally last week, so just know that. But basically, the bill's going to change the way that permitting is done in terms of looking at the site wholly, holistically, in terms of the pollution on site. So it's going to treat all potential pollutants from one oil and gas site holistically, so you wouldn't individually pick out the different developments on a site for separate permitting. It's all going to be considered in one kind of catch-all permit that needs to go through CDPHE or the AQC to get an air permit before you could go to the ECMC for a drilling permit. So requires that air quality permit before you can proceed with production permitting. So that's kind of a change from the current standard. Those are the three, what I would consider the three. Those are the three, um, what I would consider the three oil and gas bills, uh, that are part of the oil and gas ozone coalition package. The sort of outlier and the one you've probably seen getting a lot of press time is Senate Bill 159, uh, modifications to energy and carbon management processes. Uh, this one is the, uh, well, I would say pause. It's, it's an entire elimination of the creation of additional new wells and oil and gas development, uh, by 2030. So I'd say the spear header, uh, behind this is Senator Hockes Lewis out of Boulder County. Um, also has Rep. Basinacker on it. Um, and then I'm forgetting Wilford. There are two other folks, those names I will recall at another date. But, um, I, I think obviously this would, you know, minimal impact, would prevent additional creation within, uh, Broomfield. But in terms of the political will behind this one, it's got an obscene amount of opposition lobbying power behind it and low, at least the ozone air quality package has not, uh, coalition has not identified this one as, as likely to succeed and likely to have a governor's signature. So not as much political will, at least from that coalition, going into 159 just because of the expected challenges with both industry and the governor's office. So likely to die in its first hearing. It's not been formally scheduled yet, but, uh, just throwing that one out there. Probably don't need to spend too much bandwidth on it since I don't think it'll have a very long life. Um, there were also a handful of new environmental justice bills that have been introduced this week that your staff is looking into, House Bill 1338 and House Bill 1339. Uh, so just know those might be of interest to council, but still need to do a deeper dive. Haven't been scheduled yet, but, um, air quality, environmental resilience are definitely, um, of key interest to the legislature this year. And there'll be many, many conversations between now and May. And I think that's the last slide in there, but I might ask you to move along and double check. Brilliant. And I believe somebody else is doing this one.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Potem and Council Nancy Rogers, the city and county attorney. I'm going to go through the firearms and public safety bills. Uh, next slide. All right, we'll start with, um, House Bill 241054. This is the jail standards commission recommendations. The committee that was established a couple of years ago by, um, by the legislature has developed, um, a very comprehensive and long report. This bill would, um, extend the committee's oversight until 2033 and then require that each jail comply with the standards adopted by the oversight committee beginning in July of 2026. And that would definitely apply to the Broomfield Detention Center. And then this also permits the attorney general to conduct assessments and audits of the jails for compliance and take, um, appropriate enforcement action if needed. House Bill 241162 has died. It's been postponed indefinitely, so we'll move on from that one. Um, House Bill 241174 is a concealed carry permits and training requirement. This bolsters the state's requirements to get a concealed carry permit, um, beginning in July 1st, 2025. They'll be required an eight-hour concealed handgun training class. It has to be in person. It has to have specific components, including live fire exercises and a written exam. There's been a couple of amendments to the bill, but they don't change that structure. The amendments are an ADA accessible class, um, that the eight hours don't need to be consecutive. Um, additionally, this bill requires completion of an initial class, um, or a concealed handgun refresher for renewal of a permit unless an exemption applies. This would not necessarily impact CCOB. We would not be the ones doing those training classes. We would just, um, be, be a county that would be giving out those permits if somebody met the state's requirements. Next slide. On House Bill 241292, this prohibits certain weapons used in mass shooting. This is an, um, an assault weapons ban. It would ban the manufacturer, import, purchase, sale, offer to sale or transfer ownership of a sn- an assault weapon. It also prohibits a person from possessing a rapid fire trigger activator. On that last piece, council will recall that you approved an ordinance that, um, banned the sale and possession of rapid fire trigger activators in Broomfield. House Bill 241270 is firearm liability insurance requirement. This requires owners of firearms to have insurance to cover injuries that occur, um, at the hand of that firearm on their property. Failure to have that insurance would be a fine. And you can get a court order, um, that would be, act as a waiver to this requirement if, for example, you had, um, problems getting insurance coverage. So long as a judge would agree, you could have a waiver. Next slide. Senate Bill 24003, this is the CBI, the Colorado Bureau of Investigations Authority, to investigate firearm crimes. Um, this, this bill would authorize CBI to investigate the illegal activity in, um, local jurisdictions involving firearm issues statewide. Um, CBI has made assurances that they don't intend to, um, overextend their rights, you know, under this bill and that they will limit their jurisdiction to the crimes that have a sort of statewide impact and respect the local authority. I will note, there is a disagreement right now between the sheriffs and the chiefs on this bill. The chiefs are in, and cities are in general support of this bill with CBI's assurance on that limitation on their jurisdiction. Uh, the sheriffs are not. Um, and there's an appropriation of $1.6 million attached to this bill. Um, Senate Bill 24131 is a prohibition on open and concealed carry in a list of sensitive spaces. So this would prohibit both open and concealed in, um, I'll, I'll do a li- the list is very comprehensive and this doesn't include everything. I have the bill printed out if you have questions about a specific place. But government buildings, colleges, universities, hospitals, nursing homes, banks, courthouses, public libraries, marijuana businesses, liquor stores, museums, zoos, um, also at public events that have permits such as parades or protests. There are exceptions for police officers, um, but that exception is limited to only police officers who are engaged in official duties. Um, armed forces officers, but again, only engaged in official duties and then armed secure, security personnel hired by facilities. Um, there's also a couple of exceptions for firearms and locked vehicles and trainers and teachers. Next slide. That is all on the firearm bills. There, there are a few others that have been introduced. Um, I think as, as Ms. Boyard emailed council earlier, this is moving very fast and we're trying to stay up on all of them. The bills that I read to you tonight, I think most of them were assigned to a committee and a couple have been referred to appropriations or finance. So they're still in generally the early stages. All right. What's the next slide after that? Is there another slide after that? Oh, there is. Thank you. All right. So there's the list of, of all the bills that we went through the first two sections and then next slide. And there's the firearm bills. Okay. So Curtis, can you go back to that first slide? All right. I think we're done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, staff. Thank you, uh, Team Aponte and Busam for your, uh, your presentation this, uh, this, this evening. Uh, we will now proceed with public comments, starting with in-person. Uh, is there anyone who would like to be heard? Please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Council. Peter Kraus, and I live in Eagle Trace North. And on the, uh, idea of construction defects law, uh, my opinion is that allowing the litigation to so affect the building of condominiums in this state as to have effectively stopped it because builders cannot get insurance because insurers will not ensure that liability is a very detrimental thing to our housing supply in the state of Colorado, particularly the step-up supply for people who want to go from apartments ultimately to a condominium and then to a single-family dwelling unit, should they be so fortunate. So I think council should push back very vigorously, um, and push forth, uh, the alternatives to, uh, slow down or to reverse some of those construction defects laws and allow the builders and the insurers, actually the latitude to begin to start supplying that all-important condominium housing back into the state. I think, if I'm not mistaken, that the state of Colorado, and, and, don't hold me to this, but I think it's three to 5% of our housing is condominiums. And I think nationwide, it's approximately 20%. So the gap is pretty glaring. And certainly, I think this city council has an obligation to step up and make it be known that, um, the attorneys need to be held at bay so that we can provide housing for humanity. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Is there any one else in person that would like to deliver a public comment on this agenda item? Uh, seeing none, is there any one on the phone that would like to join? Not for this item. All right. So next is, uh, questions and comments from council. The time to make motions for a formal position on a piece of legisla- legislation will come next. Uh, before we can, uh, begin this discussion and the potential consideration of formal positions on bills, I want to encourage my council colleagues to keep their questions and comments brief and succinct. Uh, we have many bills to discuss and other, uh, business items this evening. Are there any questions or comments? Mayor Castriata, you're up first.
Oh, I get to go first. Okay. Well, thank you to Ruth and Julia and, uh, and Nancy. And is that all we had? Yes, for the thorough review and kind of highlighting some of the lowlights, um, of what to expect. The, the trend of state preemption continues with, uh, our state legislatures and not just in Colorado, trying to gut local government authority. Um, many decisions are meant to be made locally because we are your accountable elected representatives and everything we do includes a public process. As you've seen in some of these, these bills, it takes away that local control and it takes away the public voice. So we'll start with the giant bill, the TOC bill, 1313, aptly named. As we saw last week, we've approved thousands of residential units. Half of those are sitting for a whole year without the developers pulling permits because it's market-driven. It's not a good financial climate right now for financing or bonds. So even though we approve them, they're not getting built. So this bill tries to vilify local governments that we're not doing enough. And to that, I say it's punitive, it's hostile. It's, 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 it makes housing-forward communities like Broomfield, uh, we're penalized with the hammer for communities that aren't. And I don't think a hammer is the appropriate tool to use. Um, as, as our former colleague on, on city council, who is now our House Representative, once said here on this dais, why use a hammer when you can use a scalpel? So we, we support this partnership with the state and we are pro-housing. We do not support preemption. It is in our legislative policies. So with that, I, I would hope that council would consider an oppose unless amended position tonight. On 106, the construction defects bill by Senator Zenzinger and, um, Representative Byrd, the Metro Mayor's Caucus is in support of this because it is one that fosters a more friendly environment and a lower risk for, for sale condo development. I've spoken to some of our local developers and this is a problem that's unique to Colorado. They don't have these, these hurdles to jump through and this high-risk litigation, uh, climate in other states. That's why you don't see any of them being built here. So, uh, Metro Mayor's Caucus, uh, is in support and will be, um, will be at the Capitol for that one. And then, um, I think that's it for now. I'll, I'll let somebody else talk. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. I just have a couple of questions at the moment, uh, on some of these bills. Um, two specifically to the TOC bill and then one to one of the firearms. And this is for, for city management. Um, the slide on zoning capacity, um, for us, if, if the TOC bill was to pass, it says our current zoning capacity is 6,059. Is that what's, is that our, what's currently zoned for in that area? Or I guess that's the first question.
I'm going to have Ms. Burton Zetti, the resident expert. Thank you, Ms. Burton Zetti.
You. Good evening. Anna Burton Zetti, Planning Director and Co-Director for Community Development. Yes, uh, what is referenced in the slide that's around 6,000 units is what we call the zoning capacity. So that's the maximum number of units that are allowed under the existing zoning at as it is today.
Okay, that's what I thought. Do we have an estimate of how many units we could support with our current water sewer infrastructure?
A little bit of a tricky question, um, because we do know that the zoning capacity is not reflective of what could be built, um, under the existing infrastructure. Some of those projects have phased infrastructure improvements. Thinking flat iron marketplace is a good example where there's, uh, probably 1,200 units that we know are coming, but the infrastructure is only really there for the first two phases. Um, so I don't have the number, uh, for how much really is available, but even our zoning capacity is not sized, um, consistent with our infrastructure.
Right. Okay. And if the bill was to pass, um, is this, is the housing opportunity goal, is that how many units we have to build there? Or is it how many, or is that the number of units we need to zone to allow to be built there? And if so, how, what time, I mean, what's the timeframe on that?
It is just the zoning capacity. So there is no measures in the bill, um, that are written to say that the city has to see those bill, those units be built within a certain timeframe. But there are, um, timeframes within the bill to say when you have to have that zoning capacity completed. Um, and it's within a couple of years that you have to have that done and the report submitted to DOLA.
Okay. So if it passed and we changed our zoning to reflect what was required, so we have all those units available, um, and then a development comes in and wants to rezone or rebuild in alignment with that new zoning, is it on them to then upgrade the infrastructure, the water sewer infrastructure through their metro district or whatever other means? Or would we have to go back in and pay for it?
That is typically the way that these projects would be developed is, um, the zoning capacity would be significantly increased. And as the projects came through, developments would need to fund the infrastructure improvements or reach development agreements with Broomfield. Or it could be that, um, if these are areas where we were anticipating some level of zoning increase, we could be looking at capital projects to do some type of infrastructure improvements over time. But that's not a requirement of the bill that would have to be just because that was what Broomfield's desire was in those areas.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have questions on that bill. And then Ms. Rogers, I had a question. There you are. Question on the, on the, um, sensitive spaces bill, the guy legislation. My understanding from talking to, with CML about that is that allows local governments to be more or less restrictive than the state law?
Um, actually, it, there's parts that allow it to, um, permit firearms.
Right.
And there's, and then there's the existing law, which allows local governments to be more restrictive. So it's a little bit of both.
And so our ordinance we passed that on open carry, that we, we gave the authority to city management to designate certain buildings, would that count as a allowance under the law? Would we have to go, would we have to go back and change our ordinance, I guess, is the question?
No.
Okay. All right. That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you, Mayor Potem.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Councilmember Winn.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. And I just want to, again, uh, thank all the, uh, the public for speaking earlier. Um, obviously, uh, very powerful, inspiring. So my first question is, um, in regards for, and again, 500 bills. I know you're covering a lot and you gave us a huge presentation. But is, is there a chance you can go over any bills that relate to immigration or, uh, folks who are, um, you know, going through the migrant process at the moment? Or?
That's, yeah, Ms. Ms. Aponte is, um, the, so the immigration components are federal. So those, um, um, so Councilmember Marsh Holson and Councilmember Hinkle, um, and Councilmember Ward, that's part of the conversations with Congressman, uh, Brittany Pedersen to, to really see what type of expeditious process could occur. But really that, that, that all occurs at the, at the, at the federal level.
Yep. Not a problem. I understand that is a federal issue and obviously, uh, you know, we all know Congress isn't doing anything. So this, I had to ask if there's any local or state, but I think.
Oh, sorry. I've, I'm trying to pull it up right now so that I have the right, uh, bill number for you. Yes, there is. I'm pulling it up as we speak. Uh, there is a welcome new migrants bill that's being run by, uh, There is a welcome new migrants bill that's being run by folks from the Denver delegation that, I will find the bill number for you before this session is over and give it to staff. But basically, it's asking the state to delegate, I think it's $2.5 million, towards new migrant programming and support for local governments and the state. This is sort of born out of the frustration that you might have seen, at least in the press, with local governments pressing upon the state to give more funding and particular budget support to local governments. I will find it, it just got introduced last week. I know that at least some of your local government coalitions are starting to talk about taking a position on that one. It's in the 1300s. I will come back, I will give it to them.
Thank you, Ms. Scanlon. And I would just say, we can plan to come back at another time and give a more expansive report on this. There is definitely, as Ms. Scanlon said, a lot of interest and concern in this area, but I don't think we were quite prepared to present it this evening, given all this other items, but so noted. And if your staff is amenable to it, we'll come back to it.
Yes. And just so your staff has the actual bill number, because this will make life easier for you, it's House Bill 1280, Welcome Reception and Integration Grant Program. It's not been, it's been scheduled for its first committee hearing up next Wednesday, March 6th, and it's coming from Representatives Velasco and Garcia, and then Senator Fields. So that one in particular.
No, and I thank you so much. Obviously, you know, 500 bills and some bills are obviously going through the first hearing last yesterday. So I understand that there's a lot going on, and obviously, the immigration process is much bigger and is not as simple as with state and local. And again, I have a wonderful presentation, so thank you so much. This is not really a question, it's more of a statement, I guess, and a concern. A lot of the firearm public safety regulation, legislation, I'm concerned that, you know, they're going to be controversial, they're going to be contentious, and, you know, I think they are in the right direction, especially for the state. And I'm just concerned that they're going to get immediately, that there's going to be court battles, and some of these court battles could last for years, especially with concealed carry permits and of course, the, you know, the bill on firearm liability. And, you know, there's not really much of question, it's just, obviously, I hope gun control or some form of legislation to, you know, make, make common sense gun reforms happens, but I'm just worried that there's going to be a lot of court battles ahead. So I thank you again for the presentation and obviously look forward to the next presentation, and you're halfway there, so. A lot more to do. Thanks, y'all. And thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm going to start my question off with HB 241313, or the Transit Oriented Communities Bill. I know Mayor Castriata and staff are having a meeting with the governor's office on Thursday. But just to get a sense, I know they're talking about using HTF funds as a mechanism to try and get local governments to do something different than what they're currently doing. Have they discussed other funding mechanisms?
Thank you, Councilmember Ward. I would say that the concern around HTF, which is, it is in fact in the bill as the default, would be withdrawn. Local governments have raised very strong concerns about that, and the response has been, well, then what would you recommend as an alternative? And I think that the concern is, well, let me just, I guess, put this maybe colloquially, you know, we don't, we don't want to be hit with any stick, you know? We don't want stick A or stick B, we just don't want sticks. And, you know, so it's maybe a philosophical difference about should this be more collaborative and incentive-based versus having some kind of consequence for not meeting the requirements? But having said that, you know, there are potentially other sources that could be explored, and that may be a part of the conversation that we have with the governor's office as Brimfield, and certainly that the, you know, the local government groups have as well. So yes, it's been discussed, but there's been nothing put on the table.
Okay. Continuing on with the carrot and stick metaphor, I believe Dr. Cog, when we had our board meeting last Wednesday, it was said that each chamber roughly has about 15 million that they can appropriate to these hundreds or so bills. I don't know if that's the true number, but I know last year it was just a couple tens of millions of dollars that they all had to fight for in relation to the other hundreds of bills that were introduced last session. So my, my question is, one, is that an accurate statement that it's roughly 30 million combined? And two, if we're going to ask for carrots, where's that money going to come from? Because 30 million is not a lot of money, particularly when you're talking about housing or any of the other issues facing us related to health and human services, or transportation, or water quality, air quality, et cetera. So I'm just, I'm curious, where do we think we're going to get that money from for a carrot? Or what are the other incentives that could be provided for, since we're not a, an entity that receives tax incentives, since we're not taxed as an entity?
All right. So to the first part of your question, I need to talk to my Dr. Cog colleagues, because they must have a crystal ball. What you're talking about is set-aside funds, and that is, you know, when the legislature, the Joint Budget Committee is done balancing the budget and introducing it to their colleagues, they say, you know, hey, we've got X amount of dollars to set aside for the bills that are still in the queue. Last year, you're right, it was around 30 million, it was 15 million each chamber. It is yet to be determined, we have a tougher budget year, a lot of the one-time ARPA dollars are going away, and so, you know, we're being told it's going to be pretty lean. And from whatever is set aside is very competitive for programs, again, that are still in the pipeline. For example, the bill around, you know, the welcome immigrant bill, Ms. Scanlon mentioned a $2.5 million appropriation that would need to come from those set-aside dollars, along with a myriad of other priorities. So one, let me just also explain that the bill, 1313, currently contains $35 million that had been set aside, different from what I just spoke about, but in the governor's introduced budget. So the governor has said, I'm going to put these dollars over here, and I'm presenting a balanced budget, they are saved for House Bill 1313. So there's already $35 million of quote incentive money. Again, to your point, local governments are arguing that's not enough, where can we get more? And it's a really good question. You know, there's, there's not a lot of change under the couch cushions. There's been discussion around, you know, perhaps there's a reprioritization of existing funds for communities that are doing TOC. I know, you know, Brimfield's done a lot of that and hasn't had the funding necessarily follow it. It's gone to other communities that haven't done TOC projects. So can we use our existing dollars perhaps in a more directed way? It's been part of the discussion. There's conversations about new revenue sources, like perhaps a real estate transfer fee that would be a fee associated with the sale of a home that would go towards infrastructure costs. That's not overly popular, as you can imagine, it would potentially drive up the cost of homes. So it's not an easy answer, and I think that, you know, a lot of minds are trying to think about where can we find that extra incentive money? And/or what can we be doing more creatively with the funds that we have?
Okay, thank you. My next question goes to HB 24-1230, the Protection for Real Property Owners. In there, they mentioned they want to increase the statute limitations period from six to 10 years. Where did they come up with the additional four years? Was that just throw a dart on the wall and see what sticks? Or did they have some sort of process in which they determined through research and testimony that that was an appropriate amount of time?
You know, Councilmember Ward, I, I am not sure exactly, you know, we didn't draft the bill, but, and we can certainly ask and get back to you on that, but in, in the explanation of why the extra time was needed, you know, it was described that you may not realize there's a construction defect until pretty far into owning the property. And that also, you know, the argument is there's a bit of a drawing out of the process with, oh, I'll fix that, and then it doesn't get fixed for a year or two, and all this time, the clock is ticking. So I, I can't personally answer why they went from six to 10 years, we can get back to you on that, but the overall thinking was the current statute of limitations is too short to allow for some of these longer defects, or defects that take longer to show up.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question that I have so far is for SB 24106, the Right to Remedy Construction Defects. In having conversation with some other elected officials, I know there were concerns that if a developer were to invoke their right to remedy, and they were to attempt to do that remedy, if it was a subpar remedy, the owner or the HOA would not be able to continue litigation subsequent to remediation. So I don't know if that was, if that's true, or they just misconstrued the language of the bill.
I think that I would say it's a, it's a point of debate. I think that issue has been raised, and the proponents of the bill would say, you know, no, that's not the case, there is always an option to pursue a remedy in court if you're not satisfied with the remedy, the construction remedy that we provide, there's always the ability to go to court. Opposition to the bill would argue, no, it actually stops. You know, you're given what you're given, this is my, I have a right to remedy, I'm remedying it in the way that I feel is appropriate, and that's what you get as the homeowner. So I think it's a, again, a point of debate.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a few questions here about the HTF funding. Thank you for inquiring about if that's even legal with that, with the faster revenue that's lumped in there. What are the, what are the exact sort of nitty-gritty talks about that? Or is there, is there a legal, you know, two sides to it that you can explain?
Boy, well, I may need to phone a friend. Where's our lawyer? Well, what I can share with you is that the Colorado Municipal League in particular, you know, is arguing that it overrides the ability for local governments who are getting those dollars to use them in the way that they see best. So one, it's, it's cutting off a, you know, the authority of the local government, and preemption itself is unconstitutional. I think we heard that a lot around Senate Bill 213 last year, that just the very fact of the state reaching in, in this space could be challenged. When you hear Senator Winter, who is the, you know, the sponsor of the bill, talk about this, you know, she will argue this is state money, and we have the ability as the state to direct it as we see fit, which it can go towards our climate goals, it can go towards our housing goals. You know, this is state general fund revenue that's being directed to the locals, and, you know, we have an ability to say what we want the locals to do with that. So it's sort of, do the locals, just by getting it, have the ability to send it where they're at, versus does the state, by collecting it, have the ability to tell you what you need to do with it? I'm sure there's lawyers that would debate that on both sides, and there's probably more nuances, so I don't know, I'm looking at our lawyer, if you might want to expand on that.
Actually, Ruth, I just want to emphasize your last piece. This is being hotly debated right now on both sides, so I don't know if we can say succinctly and with any, any absolution, which way is the right side?
All right. The fact that we have that much contention over one bill, just in one little area like that, tells me there's a lot of red flags about this. Thank you. Our metro area county commissioners, I just want to remind our fellow city council members, we are asking us to talk about tonight to this TOC bill as far as amending it to remove any preemptions or mandates, that the sponsors create a true incentive-based mechanism to help the state achieve its housing and transit priorities in proper alignment with local use, land use goals and authority, particularly when Mac talks about, you know, supporting those people who are unhoused regionally. And so we need to just make sure that we are not only giving housing, but we're also giving transportation. So if we do talk about that, I would like to talk about that one particular subject. And then I have one, a few questions about the, I will move to support this later, but it's HB 241174 about concealed carry permits. And what people might not understand is that if you go to get your concealed carry license, it just varies from, from different entity to a different entity who's giving you that permit. My husband has one, and he says, you know, in Brimfield, we require, you know, this, this and that. And if you go to another city or county, they require different things. And so what this does is this is sort of, makes it sort of really just more consistent throughout the state, which is very needed. And actually, when we were debating our gun laws last year, we actually had a lot of people write in who were instructors, who said, actually, I really want to make sure that everyone understands how to use their weapon and have that live fire. So my questions are for you, I think, Ms. Rogers, I believe. I like that they clarified that the eight hours does not need to be consecutive. Do we know if the testing and the instruction can be online? Or do we know what that looks like? We know that there has to be some sort of live fire session, which is recommended by the instructors that wrote to us last year, but what about the instruction being online?
I'll double-check, Councilmember Henkel, but I believe the in-person part of the class requirement is still in there, but I'll double-check, unless it needed to be accommodated for a disability under the ADA.
Okay. All right, I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Henkel. Councilmember Lim.
Another question about HB 241313. The other part that I view as a stick is the injunction aspect that can be levied. So could you explain a little more detail about how that would work?
And again, I may need to defer to Ms. Rogers here, once again, in legal space, but, you know, essentially, the bill stipulates that if the jurisdiction does not, you have to submit a report to the Department of Local Affairs, and you have to tell them, this is what we're doing to meet our housing opportunity goals. They can deem, sort of unilaterally, as the bill reads, if that meets the standard. And if it does not, they can pursue an injunction and require you to change, I guess, change your goals, and I'm looking here to Nancy. You know, in my mind, an injunction means, you know, stop what you're doing and redirect. Like whatever you're doing, as outlined in your plan, is not sufficient, and therefore you need to go this way, or do this much more, or whatever it might be in their, you know, in their view that is not being met, they have the authority to tell you to do something else.
So if your zoning is out of, if you don't change your zoning to create more density, then you're out of compliance, your report would be out of compliance, and then you would be deemed out of compliance by the state, and the state would file an injunction against the local government?
Yes. And files, so it's not, they wouldn't, they wouldn't order an injunction, you still get notice and an opportunity to be heard before a court, and a court would have to order the injunction, but this is a tool that the state would be able to use to sort of get compliance.
And then would it be up to the court to decide if the local government remedied the situation? Okay, so it could be subjective to the court?
It could be.
It could be, okay.
But the courts will be, of course, looking at the state statute.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and have the same, yeah. I mean, they, they still have to follow the confines of the state statute, but it would be the determination of a judge.
Okay. Okay. And then I had a question. There was no, on the, one of the Public Safety, 1054, the Jail Standards Commission Recommendations. I was surprised there wasn't a Brimfield comment on. I was surprised there wasn't a Broomfield comment on that. Would that is, would that impact us?
It would not. Historically, we far exceeded any one of the state standards. So we would benefit from having somebody come out and tell the chief how excellent they are. But no, it wouldn't be a financial impact for us to make any adjustments.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Councilmember Anderson.
I just have a couple of questions. One of them was on the HB 24 1304, the minimum parking requirements. That bill is just to say you can't establish a minimum, but there's nothing, if the developer wanted more parking, there's, is there anything preventing that? The developer could request more parking if they wanted it?
So I'm sorry, if I understand your question, you're saying can the developer ask for more parking?
Yes, you can't, you can't establish a minimum, but the developer, if they thought they needed more parking, they could. Is that?
No, my understa, oh, go ahead.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to take that question. So yes, developers would be able to place the parking that they believed was appropriate for their site. The bill does allow municipalities, local governments to establish parking maximums. So we could still have maximums in place, but we wouldn't be able to have minimums.
Okay, thank you. That is helpful. And are we doing just questions now? Or this is so hard because I don't know which ones we're going to take a position on. So I don't know, can we, will we comment as we take the positions?
It's up to you, but that would probably be the most efficient way to do it.
And that's all my questions. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions at this time? You know what? Before we go to second round, I'm going to make a couple of questions. I have a couple of questions. Well, one of the first ones is comments. The housing transit oriented communities, you know, I guess my my question is how to send the strongest signal to the state legislature for how this will negatively impact Broomfield with regards to especially our infrastructure? I mean, is it oppose the strongest message?
That's a, that's a difficult question, Mayor Protam. I'll just be honest. Maybe first let me share with you where your, where your membership associations are at, as far as I understand it. I believe that CML is in amend. I believe that CCI is in oppose. CCAT is in amend. I am not sure, and maybe you know, Mayor Castellata, about Dr. Cog and or Metro Mayor's Caucus.
CML is oppose unless amended.
Okay.
They're not amended.
Oh, okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I must have misunderstood their lobbyist. So for, to correct the record, CML is oppose unless amended. I guess what I'm hedging a bit on is that we do have a meeting with, you know, the governors. They've specifically reached out to us. I don't know if they're doing that to other communities, but they've reached out. Having said that, I'm not confident that a lot is going to change on this. I mean, you know, I think it's it's just a vision of how this should be done has been laid out, and I'm not sure they're, they have a different philosophy about where this should go. So, you know, as I've been talking with all of you and as we've watched it last year, I think you feel pretty strongly about this. And, you know, saying oppose unless amended is the strongest position. I would, however, caution you against leaving space to negotiate and to move forward. You don't want to ever shut any doors. So I would also ask, you know, your very accomplished staff here what they think. And, you know, it's not like there's no going back, but it's, the strongest position would be oppose unless amend. It may, you know, not be well received, but if that's where you're at, that's where you're at.
Mayor Protam, since Mr. Ponte asked about Dr. Cog's stance, I believe Dr. Cog took a full opposed position. I do not believe we took an opposed unless amended position.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. So, you know, moving into the construction defects, it seems, it sounds like that, you know, one of the things that, you know, I would say that individual council members from Broomfield have signaled to the state the need to modify the construction defects in the state. The legislature has provided a number of options that are available to us this year. And, you know, my my opinion is is 106 does have the best chance of passing, and it also has the best ability to incorporate other ideas from the other bills as well. So, you know, I, you know, I think that that one has a little bit more support. I like the idea of 1082 in terms of studying this, but it, I think it is one of those where it's too little, too late at this point in the housing crisis here. This would have been a great bill to study and a great bill to have, you know, that information from 10 years ago. But, you know, legislature didn't do that. Looking at the, the, Councilmember Lim asked my question around HB 24 1054, which was the jail standards commission recommendation. So those are all my questions at this time. Councilmember Mar Scholten.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I just had one follow up question on 1313. These sticks that would apply to us, the funding and the injunction, what would we have to do to not have those applied to us? Is it just rezoning that, those two areas and setting up the administrative approval process? Or is there more to it than that?
It's a little more complicated than that. And we would have, we, anything that happens straight across the board, there's going to be consequences. And so this council has seen in the past, when we've had something zoned commercial or mixed use, we were now down to the unit to be able to say, fully informed, this, here's the trade off. We have something that's going to be coming before council that is for sale, condos that are that are coming relatively quickly and and income aligned. But the trade off is that was zoned commercial. And the and the reason that's important is because for the long range financial plan, we make budgetary decisions based on what the zoning can hold. So anytime that we have that trade off, it's it's a different, it's not only the infrastructure piece, but additionally, it's that forever modifying that piece of land. And so we know that that commercial real estate is one of the reasons that Broomfield is, has a solid base, because from whence we come, we've always been super mindful of that ratio. So Councilmember Mar Scholten, it's a bigger conversation than if we just do the rezoning, that we're not, we're not going to have the the stick approach. I think it's also the cadence of, so it's a, it's a little bit about what what the mayor was saying, cadence in market, to what degree we can influence that and to what degree these developers, council's going to be hearing relatively quickly, that the developers are unable to put in the infrastructure. So it's the, it's the chicken or the egg, right? It's that paradox, that if we don't have the infrastructure, we can't get the houses, we don't have the houses, we can't get the commercials. So Broomfield, what are you going to do about it? We're going to be hearing that more and more as we move forward as well. So that's a long answer to a very short question. Bottom line, it's it's more complicated than it seems.
Thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. One quick comment, because it pertains to all of the construction defect bills, and I don't want to go through each single one and say the same thing over and over again. Dr. Cog, for the most part, took predominantly amend positions on these bills, although if I remember correctly, I think we took a support position for the the study bill, essentially. But with that, I do have a question about the study bill. Don't remember what the bill number is. But did they, I know, I'm sure it's in the bill, but what was the timeframe in which they wanted to say? When was the report supposed to be due? I think it roughly a year.
We may need to look that one up for you.
Okay.
Which Ms. Scanlon is quickly figuring out.
Not a problem.
Since I have the floor, I might want to also just share with you that we have received some feedback on Senate Bill 106 that this does also apply to counties. So to the extent that you have a project built and, you know, a housing project built, and it has construction defects, you would be subject to the right to remedy and, you know, the pieces of this bill that are, that that the average market person is subject to. So just be aware of that. There's been some concerns raised that that might be a little thwarting for counties.
So if. Let me just ask a clarification question about that bill. Is that for units, we essentially contract to build? Or is that just saying units in unincorporated counties are subject to this same provision? I just want that clarification.
Excuse me, I was phoning a friend. So I'm going to answer your first question, and then I'm going to ask you to sadly repeat.
No worries.
So the study, the study is due back December 31st, 2026. So, yeah.
That's quite a lengthy study.
And then your second question.
So the second question was relating to what you stated about the bill of Senate Bill 106 applying to counties. Is that units that are in unincorporated counties are subject to the same provisions? Or is it units that if we as a county were to build and construct through, let's say, the Broomfield Housing Alliance, we would still have these rights of right to remedy and so on and so forth applied to us?
My understanding it is, to the extent that you're responsible for that unit, you own it or you own it through the housing authority. So wherever it's located, incorporated, unincorporated, the provisions of the bill would apply.
All right, just wanted to make sure I was on the same page with that one. Thank you.
Mayor Castellata.
Thank you. So on that, that piece of information that counties are also on the hook for defective road maintenance, I saw a document being passed around by the Trial Lawyers Association, which is obviously heavily against construction litigation reform, because, hey, you know, that's where they're making all their money. So they're doing this full court press against the Senate bill for right to remedy, because again, it's obviously, this is going to cut into their income. So they're spreading that around. And I would like to know, is it really true that HB 10, SB 106, the right to remedy bill for construction defects would apply to our road maintenance projects? That's what they're saying, that's what they're trying to do to spread propaganda.
And Mayor, I I'm not familiar with what you just stated with respect to roads. What I was referring to is analysis done by other county attorneys that the provisions of Senate Bill 106 would apply to your housing construction. So I I'm not sure where the road issue came from, but.
Senator Winter sent it to me.
Oh, okay. Well, what I was sharing was from your colleagues.
Build Our Homes Right. So I searched where Build Our Homes Right is from, and it's the Trial Lawyers Association. So just follow the money.
We'll take that question under advisement and get back to council on that point.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
All right. Seeing no other council comments at this time. If a council member desires taking a position on any of the bills discussed, now is the time to do so. Does any council member want to make a motion to take a formal position on a piece of legislation?
Mayor Protam, I'd like to have our 10 minute recess. It's 8:30 almost.
Well, he could, this could be a while.
This is going to be, this is going to be a while.
Let me break.
Great suggestion. We will take a 10 minute break.
We got to wait out, like, yeah, this is going to not going to be quick.
I was like.
All right, welcome back. Welcome back. Where we were was specific to taking a position on the legislation. If a council member desires taking a position on any of bills discussed, now is the time to do so. Does any council member want to make a motion to take a formal position on a piece of legislation? Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you. I'm not quite sure how this is gonna work with the legislative updates and I don't know if Jeanne Lim wanted to move something herself, so I don't know what's going on with that. But I would like to move that we support HB 241174 concealed carry permits and testing, clarifying that the eight hours do not need to be consecutive and also that it needs to be ADA accessible and other clarifying amendments that were added to that bill as described by our attorney Nancy Rogers. What this does is it just really levels the playing field for if you get your concealed carry license in Colorado.
If we can get a motion, so we got a motion from you, if we can get a second and then go into discussion.
Sure, sorry about that.
I'll pass it back to you.
I'll stop talking. I move, I don't even have to say this, I move to support, you know, HB 241174.
Great. Thank you. We have a, we have a motion from Councilmember Henkel to take a support position on Bill HB 241174. We have a second from Councilmember Cohen. Councilmember Henkel, you're up for discussion.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Would love to support this. We did talk about this at length last year and we really did support education, but we did move it to the state so that it would be a state thing. We wanted to have it mandatory for those who were going to buy a gun. We are not quite there yet, but if we can at least standardize concealed carry classes, you will find that a lot of people who teach the classes are very excited about that. So that way, everyone has the same education level. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Anderson. That's all right. I just looked right over you. I apologize. Councilmember Anderson.
I forgot about the button. I just want to quick way in here. I am not going to support this motion. Just on my mind, just, we had a lot of people show up last year and we also heard a lot of opposition to those who are current concealed carry owners and there's nothing in this legislation that makes those, if, if, it's only the law-abiding citizens is what we heard a lot. So I will oppose this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Just as a note for my council colleagues, a two-thirds majority of the entire council, not just those present, is required for council to take a direct formal position on the bill. Seeing no further discussion, council, please cast your vote on this motion electronically. All right, council, let's see. All council members have entered their vote. As a reminder, a two-thirds majority of the entire council, not just those present, is required for council to direct a formal position on the bill. The results will now be displayed on the screen. That motion passes eight to one. Are there any other motions related to legislation? Councilmember Ward.
I move that we take an amend position for HB 24-1313.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? A second, a second from Paloma.
So seconded.
Not yet. So we have a motion from, from Councilmember Ward. We have a second from Paloma. Councilmember Delcado, I'm sorry. Is there, is there any discussion? Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I will say this bill is substantially different than last year's because it's not quite as all-encompassing as rezoning every single parcel and, thank you for the sly comments. But I think there are some issues I have with the bill, particularly I don't agree with the polling of Highway User Trust Fund or Tax Fund, whatever it's called. I do think it is important for cities and counties and city and counties to have access to those funds because we use it for maintenance. It's not used for construction of new roadways. And safety is paramount when it comes to our roads and making sure that not only automobiles have access, safe access to those roads, but our public transit resources, buses, vans, but also pedestrians and cyclists who right now have to use the road in some instances. So I would rather see a different source if, since I don't think there's going to be enough money to really do incentives that are going to make a huge impact, particularly for those in the Denver metro region or even along the front range where 90% of our population is, I mean, 35 million is pennies in the proverbial bucket overall. So I would rather see us take an amend position to work out that particular issue. I know there's some issues about having the administrative process. And like Ms. Aponte said, it keeps us at the table and I think it is a more inviting approach to have a conversation rather than no or even no unless amended. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Marsh Halsen.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This bill frustrates me. I absolutely understand the reasoning for this. The frustrating part is that we're doing the job. Brimfield is building the dense, we're building as fast as we can. Right now, it's the development community that isn't, with the finance, interest rates that aren't bringing the developments, but we're developing as fast as we can. I'd like to see some changes to our zoning and I've expressed that in different forums. I do think we should be denser in some areas, but that's a different discussion that we should be having. But I understand the frustration at the state level for this, this, this legislation. I sit at this, the Cal Municipal League Executive Board and Policy Committee that I've been involved with for the last two years. I sit in those meetings and listen to our neighbors to the south that have light rail but refuse to build any density because they don't want poor people next to them. And that's just the flat truth of what's going on. And it's frustrating because we're building and they won't, they have the benefit of the light rail and we don't. So we're doing our fair share, they should be too. So I understand the carrot, the stick part of it. And, but that said, I don't like the highway funding portion of this. I don't like the administrative approval process, part of this. I think there definitely are ways that this can be done and frankly, the preemption is just wrong. They should not be preempting our Home Rule Authority on this or any other issue for that matter. So I am in an amend position on this is what I recommend. I agree with my colleague. But I'd like other communities to pick up their slack that we've been picking up for a long time. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Castriata.
Thank you. And while I guess I could commend the Governor's Office for starting the stakeholder process earlier this time, what they call stakeholder-ing is listening to the concerns. Our staff has vetted this bill and outlined numerous concerns, yet every week they meet and don't change anything. In fact, it got worse. They added the injunction now, so it's even more punitive. So I don't see this bill going in the direction of where they're amenable to taking out the preemption. They won't do it. They think that, you know, they want to control everything. So I, I don't have any hope, unfortunately. I'm taking the meeting with the Governor's Office because they reached out and I'm pretty sure it's going to be the same thing we get every time we meet with them. We're not changing it. They're not going to take out the preemption. They're not going to take out the punitive penalties. We've been down this road before. So I, I would, I would suggest that my colleagues do a substitute motion to oppose as amended. Unless amended.
We have a substitute motion to oppose unless amended on House Bill 241313. Do we have a second? Yes.
Is she acting mayor tonight though?
Yes, yes. Attorney Rogers.
If, if you want, I can do a deep dive and research it, but I, I would agree. I think the, the mayor is still here. She's still in her mayor role and, and it does take a council member to make a substitute motion.
Excellent. Thank you, Attorney Rogers. Thank you, Councilmember Marsh Halsen.
As presiding officer, you can also disagree.
Great. Mayor Castriata, is, is that your last comment?
Councilmember Lim has her hand up.
Excellent. We will, we will move on to Councilmember Lim.
Okay, I, I think this is the point in time then in which I would like to make a substitute motion to take a position of oppose unless amended.
We have a motion to oppose unless amended, House Bill 241313. Is there a second? We have a second from Councilmember Henkel. Is there any discussion on the substitute motion? Councilmember Lim, would you like to have any discussion on this item?
I, I have followed this bill, not to the depth of talking to the stakeholders, but I have followed this bill and there has not, there's too many sticks still. The, the funding, the injunction. I don't, I don't think the draft is taking into consideration our, our needs as a local government to not be preempted in our zoning authority and the consideration of what would, what it would be fiscally for our infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you. I would like to add a period to the word opposed. In addition to that, I, I would like to reiterate that for a governor who seems to like a lot of carrots when it comes to oil and gas industry, he doesn't do that with land use and it's very scary to me. We need to make sure that, that we oppose this and I don't even think we can unamend this bill, to be quite honest. So I'll, I'll be in support of oppose unless amended, but it's almost like oppose, period, unless amended, amended, amended. And so that's where I stand. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this item? We have a motion and a second to, a substitute motion to oppose House Bill 241313. Council, please cast your vote on this substitute motion electronically. This is, this is the...
That's not what it says. It says vote, yeah. This is the substitute motion then. So this is the substitute motion?
Correct. This is the substitute motion on House Bill 241313 for oppose unless amended. All council members have entered their vote. As a reminder, a two-thirds majority of the entire council, not just those present, is required. The results will now be displayed on the screen. That motion fails six to three because it does not pass that two-thirds majority. We move back to the original motion, which is to amend House Bill 241313. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Seeing...
Sorry for that interruption. This is, this is to moderate so we don't have to put our coats on and take it off and put our coats on and take it off. These, these are warm windows. They have been. We just didn't know that they've always been there.
We just didn't know that they've always been there.
All right. I appreciate the unique nature that this night is presenting for me. So I appreciate it. Everything, anything under the sun can happen. All right. So we move back to the original motion of amend on House Bill 241313. See no further discussion on this. Of course you can. You got there just in time. Councilmember Lim, discussion on this original motion.
So could someone please explain the implications of the amend position failing? So then Broomfield, Broomfield's, I mean, does it have any implications for Broomfield's staff in negotiations? Or does it have any implications for, I'm thinking out loud, what we can say to our member organizations about Broomfield's position? If we've rejected, opposed with amend now, and then now we're voting for amend, what if that gets rejected? Where are we left? Monitor?
Yep. Yeah, the default would, would, would be status quo.
Okay, monitor. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further? Councilmember Henkel.
Sorry, I'm still old school raising my hand. Politically, what does that mean? I actually, you know, I've only been involved in CCAT for such a short time and CCI. Politically, what does this voice to those who are writing this bill, who are looking at Broomfield, who's probably one of the most purplish counties? You know, they look to us a lot for our guidance on a lot of bills. So I'm just, I'm curious as to what a monitor, like you're watching some sort of 7:00 PM news station versus, you know, an amend, which, you know, you know, could we add strongly amend? I'm not even quite sure what we do.
Well, a great question, and I think I would say it would be odd for Broomfield to not have any position on this bill. And I'm sorry, maybe you want to answer that question, Manager Hoffman. My apologies if I
I think monitor is not having a position on the bill. Amend is having a position on the bill. So the default to Councilmember Lim's question would be if an amend position doesn't pass, then it just goes to monitor, which is what we have right now. A position, politically and otherwise, is amend. So sending a message, oppose unless amended, or that straight support, what kind of, what, what kind of weight does it carry for your lobbying organizations? You all can determine that as elected officials.
All right, any, oh, Councilmember Anderson.
Okay, so just to clarify, so whether it's opposed unless amended or support unless amended, they both rely heavily on the amended and we're not defining heavily, that was like, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm following. So that, that amend could be the heavy, heavily amended, is what we're, we're staying there. You're saying that if we monitor, we're in a better position if we
If you take a position, which, which is amend, so you're, you're actively engaging with making the bill something that it isn't right now, essentially is what amend says.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cohen.
Since there isn't required two-thirds support for oppose and to amend, could we simply pass a resolution opposing anything involving preemption?
I, I look to my Attorney Rogers. Is that, is that a relevant, I mean, it's not necessarily a specific bill, but it is a general principle and we've set our legislative principles at the beginning of our legislative session. So I look to you to help me figure out where this would land.
It, it would be up to council and you could make a motion like that, but I, I do think, Mayor Protem, you've touched on the implementation part of that as, as we send our lobbyists back, as we send staff back to try to communicate when we have some level of preemption in bills, does that mean the entire bill is, is opposed when maybe there were pieces of it that council wanted? So yes, it's something you could do, but I, I think we probably want to try to flush that out a little bit more first. And go bill by bill. But you could do it. It is, it is more of a policy statement that in general, council opposes bills that, that degrade local authority.
Councilmember Cohen.
You want to go bill by bill? Is that what you're asking?
I, I think that, I think that with these, I'm going to stick my neck out here a little bit. So with these, with these bills that we're amending, we have got to come up with a consensus idea of what those amendments are going to be. And it sounds like that your idea on this bill, when we talk about preemptions, is something that has been mentioned by numerous council members. And I think that that would be, fall within the realm of amendments that are, that we would guide our, our lobbyists to be seeking. Is that we need to remove the amount of preemption on this. I look to my colleagues, especially to my left. Is that a fair statement? Councilmember, Councilmember Marsh Halschen.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I mean, for me, it's the preemption and the, the manner in which the care, the sticks are done. Those are the amendments I would prefer to see. Can't speak for anyone else, but preemption to me is, is preemption and that we shouldn't be doing it. The state doesn't have the authority to do it. But obviously they try to, but then it's the sticks and the manner in which the sticks are done is offensive in this regard, but
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ward.
I was just going to say, I think it's a fair characterization that a majority of this council views an amendment to also pertain to removing the encroachment on local control. So I think that would be a fair characterization based on the discussion this council as a body has had. Even though Councilmember Leslie is not here, I know last year he was supportive of the position we took of not wanting to encroach on local control from the state. So I would say it's a fair characterization.
Okay, great. So it sounds like that if, if we were to go to amend position on this bill, that we would be looking to amend that part of this bill. Any other further discussion? Councilmember Henkel.
No, I just wanted to confirm that portion of it just because that also deals with the MAC letter that we want to send out as a council too, so.
Councilmember Ward, I turn back to you.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, if we don't take a position, all of our lobbying efforts, we are silent. So with Dr. Cog, I cannot vote on any of the bills that we monitor. CCI, we can't do that. CCAT, you can't do that. CML, you can't do that. So I just want to reiterate that if you don't take a position, we will be silent.
Mayor Castellata.
If we can't get to a seven-person consensus, then we can't take a position. Those are the rules. So it's kind of in the hands of you guys. You know, the threshold is two-thirds majority, so you need seven. And what, what I'm concerned about is we, we created a legislative policy with principles that outline what we stand for and what we're against. And one of those is preserving local control. So by voting against the opposed, you're supporting the state taking away our local control. And you're okay with that. And that's the bigger concern because it starts with little things. What's next? Our water rights? They're going to claim that as a state's interest? It's really important to hold the line here. Otherwise, they will gut us. And then we can all just go home. So think about it. In terms of, we've, we've felt the harm of state preemption. Thousands of residents in Broomfield felt the harm because of state preemption on oil and gas siding. And they were fine with putting oil and gas operations 500 feet from homes and schools and parks for decades until 2019. Unfortunately, it didn't happen soon enough. And so thousands of our community members had to pay the price with 24/7 industrial-scale operations in their windows. They moved, the ones that were lucky enough to move. So you don't know the history of what the price Broomfield has paid for state preemption. And that is why we have been so adamantly opposed to them taking that back because we fought to get it back. Local land use authority is paramount because we know what's best for our communities. We are going to prioritize health and safety. We're not going to put housing next to industry. They will. And that's not okay. We have zoning for safety reasons. And when you give that away to someone else, you have no control over the protection of your community. That's my final answer.
I'm going to turn to Councilmember Anderson, then I'll do Councilmember Ward.
Okay, so I am now confused again. My apologies. Okay, so I, I don't know what to do here because I stand firmly with our mayor. I represent communities that were harmed because of the preemption, the state preemption that we fought hard in 2019 for. So what I heard just a little bit ago is that I would have preferred the, you know, oppose unless amended, but when we're, when we're discussing this and we're going to go off, go to our bodies that we represent, what we just heard here is that these amendments have, can't, they must take away that preemption piece. So are we, if we vote yes on this, that we can take a position, are we all here, up here, understanding that that means that you cannot support this bill until, until somebody takes away the preemption? Is that what we're saying here? Or otherwise, I'll, I will vote nay and we'll just, because I, I'm not clear now on that piece.
Councilmember Anderson, could you ask that question one more time?
So, so if we vote to support this, that we can't take a position, and we think we've all made it pretty clear that the preemption piece is a sticky piece, and we go back to our respective bodies, so all, all these, like CCAT and CML and CCI, and we just, we would then represent it that way that we will not support this until the preemption is removed. And we're seeing more carrots and less sticks. So is that, is that a fair characterization? Otherwise, I'll go with the mayor's. I, I want to, we paid a, paid a big price in the past for the preemption, so.
Mayor Protem, if I may answer that question, because it actually aligns with what I wanted to say.
Go for it.
Taking an amend position, we're going, it means you amend, you are in an amend situation. You can't vote for it, you can't vote against it. You're in an amend position until the policies that we have laid out up here, as well as the policy document that we have in place protecting local control, because that is a council policy that has been approved by this body, are addressed. So I, and I take some offense to the mayor's characterization of some council members on this body who she has deemed unknowledgeable about previous actions. And that, I think that's my, my answer to you, Councilmember Anderson, is when you're in an amend position, you're in an amend position until the issues that we talked about for the specific bill, along with what align with council priorities, such as ensuring the protection of local control are addressed. So you're just amended, your, your goal based on our policy is we have to protect local control. That policy document is still in force. And I, I think that answers your question.
The one final question to that, then what was the difference between oppose if amended or support if amended? We, we were in a more firm position to say we want change with the oppose, but I, we're, we're in the same, sort of in the fuzzy ground in between. Would that, from the city manager's perspective, was that, would you say that's correct, that we're just in a, that they're, they're both very similar?
If you have two pieces to it, right? So you have one piece, which is amend. If you have oppose unless amended, that's a pretty good indication that if this bill doesn't move, we are oppose. Support if amended. We have specific things that we're asking in order to support the bill. I don't think from all of the land use pieces and all of those conversations that this council would say, and we're not anticipating it to, to, really, we want to get it to where, don't do any harm to us. So that's not a support position. So I don't see this council going to a support position. So it's, it's either oppose unless amended or amend. Or oppose, right? So those, those are really the three options. Oppose, period. Oppose unless amended. Or amend.
Just like, might be helpful to add one thing for, logistically, for registering you on the Secretary of State. We put you down, the Secretary of State does not account for oppose with amendments, support with amendments. You have to purely register on a bill as oppose, support, or monitoring. They don't, not that your technical parts of this don't matter, but at least when we're registering you with the official position on the Secretary of State, if you were to take an amend position, it would just say amend on your reporting. So public records, when people can see the position of the Broomfield City Council, would just indicate that. The conversation around support with amendments, oppose with amendments, that jazz is what we communicate to stakeholders, to sponsors. But it, it, just at least for that understanding of the pen to paper, what, do you have to file for the Secretary of State since you pay us? That's what we have to say. So hopefully that helps clear that up a little bit more is your support and oppose with amendments is more conversational. Your official position with the Secretary of State is that oppose, amend, all that jazz. So hopefully that helps. Because I know it gets tricky.
Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Henkel.
Thanks. If it gets over, like, let's say to the Senate and, and we're deciding that there's really nothing really going on, are we able to just switch to an oppose? Like, if it's, if we get to the point where we feel like they're not moving the needle enough, we can just switch to oppose, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Marsh Halschen.
Call question.
We have a, a motion to call the question. Is that correct? Did I say that correctly, Attorney Rogers? Motion to call the question. We need a second. We have a second from Councilmember Ward. So the motion to call the question needs a two-thirds of council present. So all those in favor of calling the question, please say, can we put that up on the screen? Or we're putting that up on the screen. So the, the motion is to call the question. Council, please cast your vote on this motion electronically. All councilmembers have entered their votes. The results will now be displayed on the screen. That motion passes unanimously. So we moved on to, so we end discussion and we move on to the motion that is before us. And that is for council to take an amend position on House Bill 241313. There we go. Council, please cast your vote on this motion electronically. The results will, all councilmembers have entered their vote. We need a two-thirds majority. The results will now be displayed on the screen. That motion passes seven to two. So we will, council will take and amend position on House Bill 241313. At this point, is there any other councilmembers that would like to make a motion on any particular piece of legislation? Councilmember Lim.
Thank you. I would like, do I, can I do these three ozone bills together? I would like to make a motion for council to support SB 24165, SB 24166, and HB 241330. Those are the air quality improvement enforcement and permitting bills.
I think that we need to take those bills individually. We could take them as a group. We'll take them as a group. Sounds good. So we have, Councilmember Lim, will you please repeat those bills for us, please?
Sure. SB 24165, SB 24166, and HB 241330.
Excellent. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Councilmember Marsh Halschen, second. Councilmember Marsha Holschen, seconds that. Do we have any discussion? Councilmember Lim.
Yes, these are bills that would support our efforts in Broomfield, even though they don't, we have our own oil and gas regulations, which limit new oil and gas development, but it would help in limiting oil and gas development and its impact right outside our boundaries. And there is one discussion point in the air, I think it's the emissions 165. It's a seasonal pause for pre-production from May to September. I'm not sure that was stated exactly that way. But I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you, Councilmember Lim. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none. Count, let's see, sorry. Counsel, please cast your vote on this motion electronically. Councilmember Nguyen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. All council members have entered their vote. The results will now be displayed on the screen. That motion passes unanimously. So council will take a support position on 165, 166, and 1330. Counsel, are there any other bills in which you would like to take a motion on? Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. I would like to propose supporting HB 241308, Effective Implementation of Affordable Housing Programs. And I make this motion as well.
Councilmember Nguyen, will you, will you repeat that bill number?
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor Pro Temp. HB 241308, Effective Implementation of Affordable Housing Programs.
And you want to support, oppose?
Support.
Support, thank you. And is there a second on that? Councilmember Ward, second? I'm sorry, I should allow you. Councilmember Ward.
I don't care that much. Second.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a second on supporting House Bill 241308. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. This, you know, this is affordable housing and it's just, the provisions in it are something I support personally. And of course, policy-wise, obviously, it is, one of the main sponsors is our state representative, William Lindstätt. And from my belief, this is going to be mainly allowing for credits to donate land to count as towards the eligibility for affordable housing. And this will be assisted by approval of voters for the potential proposition 123. And I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other further discussion on this item? Seeing none. We have a motion to support House Bill 241308. Councilmembers, please cast your vote on this electronically. All right, all council members have entered their vote. The results will now be displayed on the screen. And that motion passes unanimously to support House Bill 241308. Are there any other bills that council would like to take a motion on? Councilmember Marsha Holschen.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. I move that we support with amendments SB 24106.
And that is SB 24106, and this is a support with amendments. Do we have a second? Second, Councilmember Nguyen. Any discussion? Councilmember Marsha Holschen.
This is the construction defect law, this bill brought by Senator Zenzinger. The amendment I'd like to see is to make sure, as Councilmember Ward pointed out earlier, that if the remedy that's done by the developer isn't sufficient for the homeowner, that they have, they still have the right to go to court after the fact. So I don't want to take away their rights to be able to remedy further. So just so that's clarified in the bill, that's the amendment I would like to see.
Thank you. Councilmember Lim.
I am having trouble supporting this until we know if it would have an impact on any kind of housing which BHA condos that can, BHA constructed. So does Attorney Rogers need more time to figure that out?
So this is, Councilmember Lim, this is on the question of, does this apply to local governments? So we were talking about it during the break. And there is a little bit of a debate, but it looks like it will. So currently under Sodera, many local governments put a provision in our construction contracts that we're not going to follow the Sodera process and we'll do our own process. That's actually prohibited by 1230, so not necessarily this bill. But the definition of claimant and the definition of, we were looking at the definitions in the greater law. There is no exception for local governments. We can be included in what, so, so there is great potential that this would apply to projects built by local governments, projects built by the Broomfield Housing Authority.
Councilmember Lim, to your point, just to clarify a little bit more of that, that's if BHA is the developer.
Yes.
Versus BHA securing the land upon which they contract for a developer. So your, your question is, it could be relevant both ways. Particularly if BHA is not the developer, and then they fall, the developer would then fall under the right to remedy.
Yes, there, whoever they hire, right, would have the right to remedy.
So, I mean, I was in favor of this bill until I heard this. So is there any foreseeable way that this bill could be amended so that the claimant, as you say, that could be broadly interpreted as including local governments, could be excluded? I mean, is that, we have one amendment that's suggested. Could, I mean, I was, I was willing to support it at one point, but not if it's going to impact BHA.
Yeah, we just, yeah. I mean, we wouldn't know until we knew. Is the question, the likelihood of being able to amend to that degree? I'd like, yeah, Ms. Scanlon can talk about that.
Yeah, this is actually, all ties into what we were discussing with during the break. This has been identified from at least Larimer County and Boulder County and some, seems like a fun sort of legal questions and conversations. So open to interpretation, but the concern exists. My expectation is that, given the sponsorship, at least in the Senate where it's starting, with Senator Kirkmire and Senator Zenzinger, I think they would be open to protections for local governments, just knowing how they've participated in other conversations around local control. I believe they'll be amenable to our concerns. So CCAT's discussing this tomorrow morning. It would probably formally be asking for that language. We haven't been told no, but we have been told that that's a concern that's starting to be picked up by other local government entities. So correct me if I'm not wrong, but I think, I, I think that amendment would have legs just because the sponsors are usually open to hearing local government concerns.
Okay, well then, I would add to the support with amendments position that we would ask for that amendment for local governments. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. I support both of these amendments. There is a movement within other communities to just kill the bill based over that. And I don't feel like that that's right. Because what we're doing is we're missing out on this middle housing. And we do have lawyers taking advantage of situations with HOAs. And if we, you know, if they're only asking for a small amount of people to be involved in the lawsuit and it affects everyone, I feel like that, that's not okay. So I feel like if it's affecting our housing, we need to provide these amendments and support because I feel like there's a movement to just totally kill the bill based on that.
Mayor Castriata.
Thank you. I hadn't thought about it until you said Larimer County. So how many pieces of legislation are being crafted right now to help Fort Collins with its problems with affordable housing? Because we all know that William Lindstätt's bill about the litigation and making the cost of legal fees go on the losing party, that's for Fort Collins. A lot of this TOC stuff is for Fort Collins because every time they get an affordable housing development, the citizens rally, gather petitions, and overturn the decisions. So they've got a serious problem with very engaged citizens who are against development. And, and have you pinpointed how many of these bills were called up just for Fort Collins?
So I'm going to plead the fifth a little on this one. No, I don't know exactly, but I will say at least in this particular instance with Senate Bill 106, they had already taken a position of amend on the bill. And that's why CCAT had identified a couple lawyers to send it to. So particularly sent the bill to local government entities that already had a position on the bill. So that's why they've been flagged. I don't know any more details about particular legislation being drafted for that particular region. But I will say in this case, with that specific amendment, it was because they already had a position on the bill.
Well, our legislator actually told me that, that SB 213 last year was to help Fort Collins. So I keep seeing these, these, these bills come by and I'm like, oh, it's to help Fort Collins. So I'm just calling it like I see it. And so we're all getting thrown under the bus because Fort Collins can't fix itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Castriata. Seeing no further discussion on this motion. There is a motion before us to support with amendments, Senate Bill 24106. And those two amendments that we've heard tonight are, when the remedy is not sufficient, the, they can still go to court as well as removing local governments. All right. Counsel, please cast your vote on this motion electronically. The results, all council members have entered their votes. The results will now be displayed on the screen. That motion passes unanimously. All right, counsel, are there any other bills in which you would like to take a position on tonight? Last call. Seeing none. That part of our meeting is complete. For our final item under reports, staff is going to provide counsel with an update on the semi-annual performance and internal audits. And I would like to remind counsel that we are only into reports. We still have a consent agenda as well as another business item. So please keep your comments and your questions brief and succinct. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bernie Block, our Director of Performance and Internal Audits.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp, council members. Bernie Block here to provide a semi-annual update since we last met in August of 2023. Earlier December of this 2023, did a risk assessment and prepared a list of potential audits to be conducted with input from the city manager's office, developed the annual project plan, which is Attachment A in your packet. Also in your packet is, as Attachment II is the status updates listing, which provides a summary of all performance audits, findings, recommendations, and the statutes of issued audits with open and recently implemented items. Performance audits that have been worked on since we last met include the Police Department Property and Evidence Audit, the Purchasing Card Audit, and the, an audit that's currently in progress is Americans with Disabilities Act. There have been no special projects or reviews. There's currently a business improvement project in the works with the Library Arts History and CSU Extension to streamline the agreements process. Consultation continues to be provided on a variety of topics. For professional development, continue to assist the Diversity Equity and Organizational Development Department with the development and delivery of process improvement and change management training materials. And with that, I would welcome your feedback and comments or questions on anything in the materials.
Thank you, Mr. Bernie Block. We will now proceed with public comments, starting with in person. Is there anyone in person that would like to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none. Do we have anybody on the phone for this agenda item? We don't. All right. Questions and comments from council are next. Are there any questions or comments from council? I have two, and I'll keep them brief and succinct. There were mentions of the ERP system and the strategic plan in the council memo. I know what that means and maybe some of my council colleagues know, but I think that these are two big items, and one of them's abbreviated, or, you know, and, and I think that we ought to ensure that our, our community understands the magnitude of these two topics, as well as the timeline and process for these two major items.
So the ERP or the Enterprise Resource Planning System is a replacement for our financial system. It's currently city suites. And that's an organizational-wide effort with the input from, you know, all major departments and available for consultation in that as well. And so that, that is ongoing. And then the strategic plan, I'm available for consultation on that and to provide some insight and direction on how we approach that to help ensure that, you know, the, the voice of the employees are being heard and are heading in the right direction.
Excellent. So the strategic plan, this is something that Broomfield has never done. We've done a comprehensive plan. We've done a number of plans and reports. This is something that we haven't done. And can we provide the purpose and what, what we hope to get out of this?
Mayor Pro Temp, to your point, Broomfield has never, so we have a master plan. We have a comprehensive plan. We have an open space and trails plan. We have a CIP plan. We have about six different high-level plans. Having an umbrella that incorporates all of those, including the community engagement piece. And so those plans, while the comp plan has a lot of community engagement, it's community engagement in various sections. It's not community engagement for the totality of that plan. Strategic plan that is being led by Dana Brule Yard, you'll have an update. Abby's going to check on that real quick, about what the year looks like for that strategic plan. And it's really making sure that we're in alignment from a budgetary perspective and that we're all, we're all headed in the same direction. Alignment doesn't, doesn't mean agreement. But that our community goals and the key performance indicators are in alignment with the budget, that are in alignment with the community's feedback and council's policies. So if we can hit on all four of those via the strategic plan, it, it really is a five-to-10-year plan. So that we're, we're not continuing to be in crisis mode, nor are we continuing to not fully understand the breadth and depth of prior decisions.
Thank you for that explanation. Mr. Block, I have one more question. With regards to, I believe it's on the Attachment II. And there were two priorities, grants and then PD, Police Department camera footage. Both of those, I believe, were either a low or a medium. I may have gotten one of those two mixed up, but they were either a low or medium. And I would ask that, you know, one, we've heard over and over again from our external auditors about grants and our grant processes. And I'm just curious with that one, should it be higher? And then we've seen numerous examples with the PD camera footage of this needing to ensure that there is a good system about retention on that, but also protecting us from liability. So should those two items be a higher priority than what they are at this point?
Mayor Pro Temp, could you please be more specific on which particular item you're referring to?
Of course. All right. So we had, so this was on page two, or sorry, page three. And this was the Grants Billing and FINS Reconciliation Process. And this was rated as a B, or sorry, as a medium.
Yeah, the, the medium rating would imply that there are some controls in place. It's just that there's opportunities for improvement. So if, if they were lacking controls in general, then that would definitely be high, but there, there are controls in place.
Okay. Thanks for that distinction. And maybe that's the same thing on page six. This is the Bodyborne Camera Program. At this point, that top one is a medium. So maybe that's the same thing is there are procedures in place, but there needs to be improvement.
That is correct.
Perfect. All right. I, I appreciate that clarification. Is there any other discussion on this item for the agenda? Seeing no further conversation on this. I'm sorry. Councilmember win.
Thank you so much, Mayor Potem, and thank you so much for the presentation, Mr. Block. Obviously, my comments are all brief. I just looked at the business process improvement and noticed that they included updates with the Library Arts and History. Can you mention what updates were made for the performance, for the BPI?
Yeah, we're currently looking at how agreements are, are processed and the administrative process involved with that. And we're just trying to streamline some of the steps in that process, working with the finance, City and County Attorney's Office to make it more efficient.
Okay, that's all I have to say. And obviously, you know, very excited that Broomfield's taking steps for diversity, inclusion and, and you know, I appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further discussion from our council colleagues. Mr. Bernie Block, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Counsel's consideration of the consent items is next. The clerk will read both of the consent items by title, and there will be one opportunity for public comments and council question, council questions and comments. Will the clerk please read Agenda Items 6A and 6B by title?
6A, Approval of Minutes for the Regular Council Meeting of February 13th, 2024. 6B, Request for Executive Sessions Regarding the Presiding Judge's Annual Performance Review.
Thank you. We will now proceed with public comments, starting with in person. Is there anyone who would like to be heard? Please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing no one. Is there anybody online? And no one online. Does any member of council have any comments on these agenda items?
Mayor Potem, may I just have a moment?
Yes, Attorney Rogers.
Request for Exec Sessions. There's a possibility we won't need all three. We're still working with the mayor and the Administrative Committee to talk about that scheduling. If we do not need one, we'll just cancel it. But we ask that council make the motion and approve them tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Attorney Rogers. Before, before making a motion, I want to remind everyone that Item 6B contains a request for executive sessions, which requires two thirds approval of council. Is there a motion by council that the recommendations contained in the staff reports for the consent items be approved? Councilmember Mar Scholshin?
No vote.
Is there a second? Councilmember Win?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, counsel, please cast your vote electronically.
It works?
All councilmember, all councilmembers have entered their vote. The results will now be displayed on the screen, and that passes unanimously. Our only item under action items this evening is counsel's consideration of a proposed resolution adopting the Open Space Parks Recreation and Trails Plan. Counsel has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor Potem, and one of our favorite people is presenting on one of our favorite items. Ms. Kristen Pritz, our Director of Open Space and Trails. Ms. Pritz.
Thank you very much, Manager Hoffman. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and all of the city staff here tonight. We'll be making a presentation about the overall final plan for Open Space Parks Recreation and Trails. And then at the end of the presentation, we're asking for council approval of Resolution 2024-11. I'd like to also note that my co-partner here in this project, Pleisha, Director of Operations, Parks, Recreation and Senior Services is here. And certainly this has been a joint effort with many, many departments and their staffs. This next slide shows you the different topics that we'll quickly try to cover for you tonight. We did have a pretty thorough discussion back in July 2023 about the 40% open lands objective and the public land dedication as well as community engagement. So we will try to go through those items relatively fast for you. Our schedule, we are at the end of the project now. We've been working for about two and a half years. Next slide. Community engagement has been a centerpiece of the project. Next slide. All of these different photos show you some of the outreach that we did with the community from things like a Raptor program in Spanish and English, Pacific Ocean Market Information Table, being at the recreation centers, the Bruhaha Bike to Work Day and Pride. We had special events located throughout the community. And on this next slide, you can see the orange circles show the events. There were 18. The QR code locations are in turquoise and those were spread across the community too, so people could access our survey and also the Broomfield Voice page for the project. Next slide, please. This gives you our community survey results at a glance. We had 819 surveys provided, which was wonderful. Next slide, please. Excuse me. With this total of 819 surveys, we exceeded the industry standard for statistical validity with a 95% confidence level and a 3.4% margin of error. So we want that error percentage to be as low as possible. Next slide, please. We compared the 2022 survey results to our previous planned 2005 survey results. Some high priorities were still very much on the minds of our residents. One is trail connectivity for transportation purposes as well as recreation. Having parks and open space in close proximity to residential areas was important. Restroom shelters in shade. Request for more open space in general, and the use of our open space in parks, recreation and trails is very high. And that's generally true in Colorado, but in Broomfield, we are particularly high users of those amenities. Next slide, please. There was less focus on buffers to the north and west, wildlife concerns, and having large sport field facilities. And that may be, be because in 2005, when we did that plan, we did not really have Broomfield County Commons in place yet. New focus items, signage, navigation, just getting through the community. How do you use the trails? How do you get to the open space parks, employment areas and so on? Safety, lighting, crossings, wildlife, vehicular conflicts, those were topics that were deemed important. And then accessibility. Lower fees for programming, multilingual information. North Broomfield Accessibility and ADA Access and Adaptive Sports Program, Programming were very popular. Residents also noted that their health, mental, physical, was very much influenced by the availability of open space parks, recreation and trails. And I think COVID really brought that to light for people. Those were some of the few areas that you could really use and get out and maybe see a neighbor. So that socializing aspect was also important. And maintenance of all of these facilities continues to be an important factor. Next slide, please. In total, we had seven focus groups and you can see the different groups that we met with there. We also met with our Open Space and Trails Advisory Committee and the Parks and Recreation Senior Services Advisory Committee eight times. At our January meeting, they did recommend approval of the plan. The vote was 14 to one. And they were really a guiding light throughout the project. We also did a final check in with this project because we wanted to make sure that we had heard the community correctly. So we had several follow-up focus groups, and then we had a tent at Broomfield Days. It was a little windy that morning, but we did have the tent there. And next slide, please. We shared these goals related to these different sections of the plan, put them on board so they were a little more digestible for people that stopped by and got comments that way. So from all of that, we synthesized the plan key goals. And they're listed here on this next slide. Connected public spaces, strong community image, equitable distribution of facilities, proactive approach to meeting future needs, and sound stewardship of open lands. And before I go much farther, I just want to explain that this really is a vision for 20 years for these different types of amenities. It's, it's not something that's going to be accomplished in five years. These are, these are big goals and they are also expensive and they, they cost money. So we look at it through that lens. It can certainly be adjusted and realigned as we move through those 20 years. And so these are concepts that the plan is pursuing, whether it's where we might purchase open space or parks or where a trail may be built. Starting with the 40% open lands objective on the next slide. Next slide, please. This 40% objective has changed throughout the years with the community. I, I went back into history and really in 1988, it was 19%. And then it was actually higher, 44%. And then through our 2005 plan, we reduced it to 40%. A lot of that was due to having a really good GIS mapping staff that could really pinpoint where lands were and get those acres correct. But the 40% objective to have land in either open space parks or other open lands that you see on that umbrella there. And it's important to note that is both public and privately owned land in those areas is 9,555 acres. We currently have 36% of that 40% goal made, and we are at a little over 8,600 acres. When you look at the map and take out approved projects, we have a remaining 759 acres to achieve the 40% goal. So a little context, over the past 28 years, and this is just with open space, we've purchased about 4,400 acres of open space for about $67 million over 28 years. And that includes fee simple land that we own, intergovernmental land on the west side of the community that was a negotiation for the Northwest Parkway and us becoming our own county. And also conservation easements. So a couple of different types of open space. But just to give you an example of it takes time to accomplish this, but we are looking at 759 acres here. Next slide, please. We have mapped our existing open lands, and I'm showing you these maps just to, to make sure the audience and people that may be listening, council, know that we have mapped a lot of this information. We developed open space suitability criteria and park suitability criteria with our two committees, reviewed those, refined them. Next slide. And then we took this map, which in purple shows you the very high value ecological areas. The, the more purple it is, the deeper purple, the more valuable it is. And we used several different state standards for developing that mapping. We also put blue turquoise circles around our existing open space and parks to show can residents really have about a half mile walk to get to one of these properties? So I think Broomfield has done a, a nice job here of providing open space and parks for its residents because many, most of the community is covered in that blue area. I think it's important to note that we also need to look more closely at some of those distances because you have US 36, you have railroad tracks and other barriers that need to be looked at. But we took the suitability criteria, applied it to this map and came up with these various sites here in the white circles. The acreage that is involved in those circles is about 1,300 acres. So there are definitely valuable lands for acquisition or conservation through development proposals for residential. However, we are only looking at 759 acres. But I just want to make the point that there are lands available that are valuable because we aren't trying to meet the 40% just to meet it as a goal. Next slide, please. We also did a map that shows the top 10 locations for open space and parks acquisition, and that's what you see here. Next slide. Moving on to the public land dedication. I want to start by saying if council approves the plan tonight, and that's an if, the next step would be to develop a public land dedication ordinance. And so there would be more work with Ostac and Pressick. And there would also be work with the council. I imagine there would at least be one study session and more community outreach. Next slide, please. The purpose of the public land dedication, I've outlined some, outlined some key points here. And a lot of this really relates to the goals for the plan. They mirror many of those goals. Two things that maybe weren't in the plan goals. By providing public land dedication to the private sector, and this is only applicable where we have residential projects. And we need to figure out the public land dedication for that project. It balances some of the burden for providing open space and parks on the private sector too, and not just on the public sector. At times too, we also get provision of school sites, which is kind of a unique thing. So the public land dedication also just contributes to that 40% open lands objective. Next slide, please. However, we have found that we have some issues with the public land dedication that we'd like to try to improve. We need to look at income aligned housing, how to facilitate that. We're dealing with a lot of multifamily projects on smaller sites. So how do we address that? And at the same time, we want to keep that equitable, equitable distribution and address our other community goals such as sustainability. So based on our developer housing business focus, focus group feedback and also other community engagement, next slide, please. We've come up with some proposals. We also discussed this quite a bit at the City Council Study Session, and there was a, a robust discussion, which was really helpful, and there were some different views. So what you see on the, the screen right now is really what we do now when we meet with developers to talk about the public land dedication. So we are proposing to keep this formula for projects that do not include any income aligned housing. And the formula of 24 acres of open space and parks per thousand persons, we plan to keep. Next slide, please. When looking at income aligned housing, we know this is a, a key community goal. So equity and also providing some flexibility to allow for those income aligned housing projects is important. Next slide. So for a project that is 100% income aligned housing and meets 60% area median income, AMI, area median income. And that is for a family of four, $74,460. We're proposing that the onsite required public land dedication go from 25% to 20% for sites, sites that are 10 acres or greater. For sites that are smaller, under 10 acres, it would be 15%. So I'll show an example of this in just a few slides, and there would be no further cash and loop at all. Some, most projects have some additional public land dedication, and that has typically been met by cash and loop. So in this situation, to really encourage and incentivize this type of project, there would be no cash and loop. So in this situation, to really encourage and incentivize this type of project, there would be no cash and loo. Next slide, please. So we will be seeing, of course, projects that have a blend. Some income aligned housing above sixty percent, or they may be one hundred percent income aligned housing, but they are not at sixty percent. Let's say they're at eighty percent, which is for a family of four ninety nine thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. So in this case, we propose to keep the onsite requirement similar to the previous example I showed you where it's twenty percent for ten acres and larger. Excuse me, twenty percent for ten acres or greater. And then if the site is less than ten acres, fifteen percent. In this case, what we'd like to do, if if the plan is approved and we move forward, we want to continue to work with economic vitality and the planners. And of course, parks and recreation on developing some kind of a a formula that would look at the lower the AMI proposed and the higher the number of units that are income aligned, the less cash and loo required. So you're rewarding projects that try to address a lower AMI. And the project has more income aligned units. That is something that for a master plan is pretty gnarly to figure out at this point. And we think we need to do a little more work. We need to work with the city manager's office and economic vitality and the planners to really figure that out. But that would be how we would address this situation. Next slide, please. So here are just some examples. If this is a completely free market project and it's it has a twenty acre site and it's total public land dedication is seven point two acres. Under our proposal, which is pretty much what we're doing now, they would take twenty five percent of their site or five acres and allocate that to a park or open space. The two point two remaining acres would be cash and loo based on the assessed value per acre for vacant land, and that's an average number. Right now, we are working with a number that we received from the assessor where he looked at larger properties that were vacant. And we took an average of what is that assessed value? And that now is about eighty six thousand dollars per acre. And that's how we propose to address the cash and loo in this situation where they meet the onsite requirement. We were looking at past open space and park acquisitions and taking an average. But that is somewhat unpredictable. And if you don't have an acquisition in a recent time, you have nothing to capture what is going on with land values in the recent years. So we feel this is a much more data driven type of value for determining cash and loo when the onsite public dedication has been made. Next slide, please. This is the a hundred percent income aligned housing at sixty percent area median income, again, a twenty acre site. So the onsite requirement goes down to four acres and there is no cash and loo. This next slide shows you a blended project. And again, we're keeping the four acres onsite. But we would suggest that addressing cash and loo for a future formula balancing AMI with number of units would be the best place, best way to determine the cash and loo for this type of project. Next slide. So highlights of these changes to the public land dedication. We mentioned using assessed average price per acre of vacant land. That's evaluated every two years. And we feel that the the data will be given to us and then we'll work with planning to come up with the cash and loo amount. If the PLD onsite dedication is less than three acres, we are seeing some smaller sites. We want to be able to count that. But we would want to be sure there is public access easement and the land owner provides the maintenance. And then finally, anything that's going to account count towards the public land dedication, the land needs to be amenitized. It needs to have the park on it or the trail going through it or whatever might be appropriate with that project. Next slide, please. Excuse me, my voice is getting a little scratchy right now, so bear with me here. Going on to trails. Next slide, please. We also developed prioritization criteria with the OSTAC committee. And again, I want to emphasize with trails, it it really helps to have an overall plan for your trail network. And if you don't have that, it's very hard to have any kind of a vision when a developer comes in and wants to build their project. So having that network of proposed trails is really helpful in the overall development of the network. And I do want to emphasize when we build trails, we if if we don't own the land and it's it's not a developer's project. If if the resident did not want the trail, we would not be building the trail. So I think that's an important point. If the resident wanted that, but they wanted to keep their property, we would typically just buy a small, thank you, just buy a small piece of land for the trail corridor or get a public access easement. Next slide, please. We've developed twenty one top trails to, excuse me, segments to complete, and we've also mapped these on this slide. Next slide, please. There are other topics that are addressed in the plan besides the forty percent objective and public land dedication. Next slide. And I just wanted to give you a list of some of these highlights. Ecological restoration was a big topic. Volunteer opportunities, accessible recreation, again, kind of going back to things we heard from the public. Public art that is distinctive and compatible with these sites. Partnerships and of course, our tribal relationship with the Arapaho Cheyenne and Ute. Also identifying opportunities to meet the need for other types of communication, especially in other other languages. That was very important in in the process and in this plan. Next slide. Cost estimates and implementation, really an important part to bring forward to the council's attention. Next slide. So looking at the the costs here for parks and open space to meet that forty percent open lands. We tried to be really conservative. We just assumed all the land would be purchased by Broomfield. No additional public land dedication, no partnerships, no grants. There will be some activity in each of those areas, but just to kind of make a streamlined approach here. That's what we assumed. And on the chart, you can see the range of costs, sixty five to a hundred million. It it really depends on when and where properties are purchased. Next slide, please. Revenue sources. We have our open space and park sales and use tax, and I provided the information of what we receive annually from that tax. And of course, partnerships and grants and the actual land, public land dedication will help with that forty percent. Next slide, please. Estimated park development costs really depend on the type and location of parks. So on this chart, we've shown you a range of sixteen million to twenty three million. And below that, the revenue sources that are typically used for parks. Next slide. Trail development costs in talking with our capital improvement engineers. We've given an estimate for you of about thirty three million to complete the trail system. And our trails are primarily built from the open space section of the parks and sales and use tax. Excuse me, sales and use tax. Next slide, please. As far as maintenance, again, this was a very important topic with the residents. They want to see everything well maintained. We have forty seven full time equivalent FTEs currently. We anticipate that with the additional lands and trails and so on, we will probably need another eleven FTEs. So that would result in fifty eight FTEs for maintenance of our parks. And I think it's important to recognize that park services maintains parks, open space, and the trails. They they cover all those areas. I also want to men, I I've got to take a drink here. We're getting shaky. Also, if a new recreation center is built in the northeast portion of the community to staff that recreation center, we will require people to to take those jobs, and that's about twenty additional FTEs. And if there are athletic fields associated with that recreation center, some maintenance staff for that area too would be needed. Next slide, please. For open space and trails, you can see some of the different things that we do here in the bullet points. Currently, we have four point eight staff members and we estimate another three to five positions will be needed. Some of it is just purely the additional population to handle questions and management plans and things like that. And all of our staffing is funded out of the general fund, as you know. Next slide, please. So we did a summary map to try to put the ribbon on this package and and this map shows you where restoration sites are located, potential open space and park acquisition, key parks, and also a recreation center. And it also shows the completed trail system. So this this plan is capsulized in this this graphic. Next slide, please. If council approves the open space parks, recreation trails plan tonight, the following tasks are proposed in the coming months. The first thing we want to do is take the plan and do a very brief brochure that would be usable by the community, council, and other staff members. Then we would begin work on this proposed public land dedication ordinance with planning and economic vitality and parks and recreation, senior services. And then in section five point six of the plan, there are many ongoing items that we would be working on, and I won't go through all of those tonight. Next slide, please. So the the requested action is that council approve twenty twenty four dash eleven adopting the OSBRE plan. Next slide, please. And we want to say thank you to the community and city council for working on this plan with us. We did have a lot of community engagement, which was wonderful and very helpful. We also have the chair of the Open Space and Trails Advisory Committee here, Michael McLean, and the chair of the Parks and Recreation, Senior Services Advisory Committee, Doug Errett. And we have Michelle Reagan from DTJ Design. She was the lead manager of this project and also had quite a a group of consultants to manage. So she's very good at moving large groups of people in the same direction. And on a plan like this, that was very important. There were also many departments, and I'm looking over there at Anna and planning and how many meetings we had with them. I was looking at our list of departments, and I think we we had the opportunity to get advice and insights from just about every department. So we're very grateful for that assistance. Ryan Jensen is also here, and he heads up all of this maintenance of all of these wonderful places. So thank you all, and we are here for questions and comments. And that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your presentation, Ms. Pritz, and and to all staff. Thank you for your work on this. This is a monumental lift. I guess that's why we only do it every twenty years. But thank you for your work on this. This is great information to have. We will now proceed with public comments, starting with in person. If there is anyone who would like to be heard, please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Peter Kraus, and I'm Eagle Chase Norton. And thank you, council and Mayor Protem, mayor and council members. I just listened. That was an amazing amazing presentation and so much data in that presentation that to assimilate it all in a three minute comment pretty difficult to do. I think that Ms. Pritz said that it costs sixty seven million dollars to acquire forty four hundred acres, which is approximately fifteen thousand dollars an acre. But the additional seven hundred and fifty nine acres will cost at a minimum, an additional sixty five million dollars. So the first point is that what you guys are getting ready to vote on is really monumental. When we talk about affordability and we talk about the developers having to seed land, then that that automatically means that they're going to make up giving away that land by increasing the cost of housing. Open space and housing are and always have been a trade off. There's no two ways about it. The more that in, and I get it that our community has said, hey, we even want more open space. But the more money, more tax dollars that we dedicate to the acquisition of that open space necessarily means that we become less affordable. Just look to our neighbors to the northwest of here. I can remember the days when I thought a hundred dollars a square foot was outrageous. When Boulder had a hundred dollars a square foot for residential. I looked at a property in Lewisville yesterday, and it was very much higher than that. There's one other point that I want to make, and it's the forty percent number. Where did that forty percent number come from? I had a very candid conversation with somebody. And it was a it was a dart at the board. It just popped up. It was kind of like fifteen dollar minimum wage. It just popped up. All of a sudden, we had this number forty percent, and it was a number that we had to meet. And it was it was an arbitrary number. So if you go back and look at and ask how do we come upon this number that we have to have forty percent of our lands into open space? I think you'll find it to be a difficult job of researching. So I know the community wants open space, and we have great open space now. I know that when we dedicate more tax dollars to open space, we are making Broomfield less affordable for anybody who wants to live here. We got to think about those trade offs. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in person that would like to present public comments on this matter? Seeing none, we do have a member of the public that has been that has joined us since six PM to deliver public comment on this item. So please press star three, state your name and last name and neighborhood for the record. Okay.
Right, Cindy. Cindy, are you there? Yes, sorry. It told me to press star three again, and I did.
Apologies. Please, please state your name and your neighborhood.
Am I here?
We can hear you. I'm clear.
I apologize. This is Cindy David calling from the Wilcox neighborhood. I would like to also say, wow, what an amazing plan. And thank you to our staff for working so diligently on that. I just wanted to point out a particular park and trail location up in my neighborhood. There's a future park location designated in the plan on page thirteen and one oh nine. It shows that future park in the Wilcox neighborhood kind of looks like maybe on Stella Stella's Meadow or maybe Clay Street. On page eighty, it shows that it's on North Zuni, maybe just off of Zuni access from northeast of the Wilcox neighborhood. So question I have there is whether or not that location is more specific or is there just multiple locations and it's a a general idea to have one up there? I'd be curious to know what the specific locations may be selected there. I'm assuming that this future park location is related to the acquisition priority number fourteen on page seventy five and page seventy eight of the plan. And then that that is also related to the extending of the southeast community loop north of a hundred and forty fourth on page ninety one. And I'm just curious if that particular part of the connection of trails is related to that number fourteen priority acquisition for a park? And if the number fourteen park does not is not located there with that, then discontinue the extension north of a hundred and forty four. So those are my questions. With regards to the comments, I just love parks and open spaces. I'm just wondering if the priority number fourteen that I was discussing before on north on Zuni, north of a hundred and forty fourth, if it really makes sense to have a park there. This neighborhood is on This neighborhood is on small acreage, small to medium-sized acreage, or probably smaller for most people. And so it's not a highly dense neighborhood. And so, and some of, some of the houses up here have some pretty impressive, what I would call quote-unquote parks in their backyards. And so while I value parks, and when I lived in Westlake, I loved going to the parks there when I was in a denser neighborhood. Up here, we have a little bit more space, and so we kind of have more outdoor ability on our own properties. So I would just like to request, as you, as the presentation was stated, that this is a 20-year plan and things will be adjusted. Maybe one of the things I would look at is maybe not having the park up there be such a high priority, a priority 14, maybe move that down the list or consider removing it altogether. I'm not sure that using tax dollars to purchase property in that area to build a park is a great use of the tax dollars. And then that goes to the extended path.
Your three minutes are up, if you can wrap up your comments, please.
Yeah, super quick, if we could just look at not doing the SEC 111 extension north of 144th, especially if it's tied to that park. It seems like it just goes up to that park and ends. And so that would be a suggestion for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anybody else online? Nope, all right. So questions from council are next. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion. The time to introduce amendments and state positions for or against this item or later. Are there any questions? Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I guess I just have a couple questions. The first one is, when we talk about intergovernmental agreements with other jurisdictions, has it ever been contemplated, and just going to spitball here, Boulder, I think it's Boulder County, has the open space sign north of Highway 128, but west of where the Brumfield boundary is? In sharing some of that, because I know when I lived over at Summit Flat Irons, which is right on our boundaries, I would actually walk to that open space because it was the closest thing there, to be honest. And that part of, I think, Brumfield, to what most people would consider open space, does not really have what people envision as open space. I know we have the golf course, but that's not like public access per se. And then we have a few little grassy parks and whatnot. But I'm just curious if that has been contemplated.
Thank you, Councilmember Ward. When you say share, what do you mean by that?
So I know, when we were talking about intergovernmental agreements, we have an intergovernmental agreement with Boulder County as it relates to the parcels that are, or not parcels, but the space that's south of Northwest Parkway and east and west of both 287. So is that something else we've contemplated, having an intergovernmental agreement with? I think it's Boulder County owns that particular open space, kind of north of Highway 128, but west of our boundaries.
We don't have an intergovernmental agreement on that area. All the area really on, I'll just call it the western side of the community. We do have intergovernmental agreements, and that agree, those agreements allow us to use the land just as if we were a Boulder County resident. And I think that provision actually applies to any Boulder County open space. So, you know, as far as the area by State Highway 128, we don't have an intergovernmental agreement for that, that land. And immediately abutting the golf course there, a lot of that land to the west is the town of Superior, which has been preserved as open space.
Okay. This isn't really a question, but more of a comment. I'm, and maybe, maybe it'll turn into a question. The dedication we have to make, that each parcel has to make when they're going through development. I mean, I look at it from my perspective of being a renter and all the parcels that we have there and there. I assume public land dedication seems to be this very piecemealed approach to acquiring public lands that, in my opinion, I'm not sure is the best approach to giving them high-quality public lands when it's just this little grassy thing that like my apartment complex has. That's open space. It's not really open space, in I think my view and the view of the residents there. So I'm just, I guess I'm curious as to why we came up with this piecemealed approach and instead of really, I think, going full force on trying to acquire certain parcels that are strategically placed so that way people can walk or bike 15 minutes to get to a piece of open space.
Thank you again for the question. So I think there are a couple things that I'd like to note. For the public land dedication, that's really looking at that particular development, the residential development, and what kind of space, and usually it's a park, not open space, that is in that type of a setting, can be accommodated there. And, and as I was mentioning earlier, that provides some immediate space for the residents and for perhaps a playground for children that may be in that, that development, and a place to gather, a place to do a little bit of exercise. So that's the rationale around that. The open space and park acquisition, though, is not just relying on the public land dedication. It's also looking at, that map that had the circles on it is looking at parcels that are valuable because they have some kind of open space and park character that's important. For example, in the northeast portion of the community, there is no open space or park east of I-25. So in that area, we don't meet that half-mile walk. And there are also features there that are really worthy of trying to preserve a more of a large-scale effort, like the Little Dry Creek area or Big Dry, or, excuse me, Prebble Creek, that's in the southern area of that corridor. Another example of just trying to make more of a substantial statement with open space, in particular, is we have an IGA with Erie. And we purchased the Harmer Open Space, and there may be some more land purchased in that area. But working with the other governments to try to do some of those bigger land acquisitions, Metzger is a good example of that. But up in that northeast portion of the community, there are some corridors that are more similar, I would say, to something like Rock Creek, where you want to try to preserve that corridor. And so it's a larger-scale effort, and that's where the open space and park sales and use tax comes in. So there are different tools that can be used and different types of acquisitions. So public land dedication is really just one of those.
Yes, and I appreciate that answer. I still am just, I'm not sure I quite agree with the concept of each, you know, little tiny parcel development is setting aside this even smaller portion of a few swings or whatnot. When I, I feel like when you want community engagement, you try and have that larger space where all types of people can gather, rather than, where we're going to have a few little playground features for smaller kids, even though predominantly we're not seeing younger folks have kids. Quite as often, they tend to be renters. And so I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around that, that notion. And in my opinion, I think antiquated view of each parcel has to dedicate a certain amount of space. I'm not necessarily opposed to parcels and properties having to do a cash-in-lou, so that way we have a fund and we can go target other parcels in the community that would fit having a park or having open space or the open lands umbrella. So that's just what I have to say. Thank you.
I appreciate that comment. I also just wanted to mention that, you know, those local spots can be very nicely done and usable, but I do see your point. And I think one thing that we'll be looking at if we do create the public land dedication ordinance is to really encourage through our PUD planning process for larger sites that the open space and park areas are figured out in advance. And we've done that with some of our projects that have come through the development review process, and I think that's a much better approach. I'm trying to think, like, maybe Wild Grass has some significant open space on its western flank, has some nice parks that are large enough for a variety of people to use. Anthem, Branch, Anthem Highlands, both use that principle. And I think that that is something that we should try to do. So I hear what you're saying, and I think it's a good point. And if the plan is approved, we need to think about what you're saying, for sure. Thank you.
Yeah, and I totally agree with like larger developments such as Anthem or Baseline or even BTS if it comes to fruition, that, you know, given the size of their project, I think that that is a good case of setting aside land because it's such a large development. I'm more concerned about the, the one-off parcels that are, you know, a single apartment complex here or a condo or townhome that's not a much smaller parcel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Lim?
I guess in the, you referred to the northeast section, east of I-25. So you referred to the Dry Creek area as, you know, a good specimen of an, of a larger area that might be worthwhile. So I see in the prioritization of the parcels that that area is prioritized. So I'm just, if you would just say briefly, how do you see the timing of the acquisition in the northeast? Because obviously, we have no infrastructure anywhere there. And, and what I would say is we also have an awful lot of stripper wells or low-producing wells that need to be PNA'd. So would we, are we going, would we gravitate towards purchasing land before anything's there or wait till somebody else PNA's the wells? What's the general approach there?
I mean, we've actually sent out letters to landowners in that area and did not hear anything back. We did have a developer look at some land up in the very northeastern corner of that area. And when we met with the developer, there was a large group of staff members that did. We talked about the park size that might be appropriate, the creek corridor, and so on. So if, if landowners don't want to sell, we don't, we don't push that. I mean, we stretch our hand out, and if they want to, great. If a developer comes in, then we'll talk about those principles there. So the timing of land acquisition is really driven by interest of the landowners and a developer that may want to work in that area. And the northeast area will be a long-term process.
How, how do, how do our accommodations for inclusionary housing projects and multifamily projects in general work into, if we have to live with 1313, the TOC bill? So that bill, as it stands right now, is, I think, 40 units per acre? 40 units per acre? I know staff's recommendation is to change it like to 20, but we don't know if we're going to get what we want. So is, if we have to live with 1313, are we going to have to look back at the public land dedication that's required in these projects? Does that question make sense?
So I would look towards Jennifer Hoffman there for this one.
It, 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 it does make sense, although 1313 is specifically the radius around a transit-oriented development. So it's not through our 34 square miles.
So, so they would have to be, would just be developments in those areas?
Correct.
Be impacted by this?
Yes.
That's good. If, if we go forward with this resolution in the third quarter of 2024, do you know already, in what phase of the development of the projects would this go into effect? So would it be grandfathered into project? This is Anna's question. Would this change in public land dedication be grandfathered into projects that are already in process? Or would it be projects that have not been submitted yet?
And you're speaking of the Public Land Dedication Ordinance?
Of the ordinance.
I mean, that would be a forward.
It would be.
Moving.
It would be forward.
Ordinance, yes.
Okay. And I just wanted to comment, my, I've had a lot of residents who are looking forward to being trail ambassadors.
Oh, good.
Who are, who are really interested in that and take care, interested in taking care of the trails. So that's, that's a side effect, a side point that they're looking forward to. Thanks.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you so much for the presentation, and obviously thank you to the chair as well for coming here and for staff for supporting us, because I know this is a lot of hours. This is a 20-year plan has come to fruition. So I'm very impressed and I'm very excited for the progress you've made and obviously for the work that needs to be done. So my question is kind of open-ended. So with, you know, we're a couple of percentage points from the 40% of, you know, of public land use, or public parks. And I guess when we reach that point, again, we are, you know, ideally, as indicated with the presentation, what, what will be the sustainability of this in the future? Because obviously, I want to know what Brumfield looks like in 20 years. And I want to, yeah, no. So what's sustainability? What will the plan look like in, you know, whether it be five or 20 years from now?
As far as sustainability, to me, in the context of your question, I think of maintenance. So let's say we actually do accomplish the 40% objective. We do have the open space and park sales and use tax. And so that money would be going primarily towards maintenance of the land to take care of it, the trails and so on. And the concept, just in a broad sense, is to have open space and park available for residents throughout the community. There are still a few areas in our developed part of the community that do not have easy access to open space and parks. And particularly in that northeastern portion of our community, east of I-25 and kind of north of State Highway 7 or Baseline, there is really nothing there in the sense of open space and parks. Certainly, there's land, there are people that have ag properties, so nothing to take away from those uses. But that is an area that I think will change a great deal in the future. And will it even be within that 20 years? I don't know. I mean, it may even be longer than that.
And one last question is, I know in the proposal, you requested for additional staff, FTEs, full-time employees. I'm just curious, if we did not approve that, what would happen to the current capacity? Like, what would the detriment be if we did not have additional resources and people?
Well, I do think that the employees that will be taking care of the land and, and, you know, meeting the residents' needs, that's an important part that goes hand in hand with land management. So I do think it's an important piece. We tried to give it our conservative estimate for you because we do think that there will be a necessity to have employees. Now, we aren't approving those in this plan necessarily, but we don't want the council to feel that the staff just didn't want to bring that up. We do think it's a reality to have additional staff.
And, and which is totally valid because, you know, in your presentation, you brought up the fact that you're going to be increasing a lot of usage, maintenance, and, you know, I, I've used my fair share of the parks around Brumfield, and I know for sure that there's some parts of trails where it's been not attended for a while. And obviously, some parts of trails where it's been not attended for a while. And obviously, y'all can be everywhere at once. So again, I really appreciate your presentation and for the amazing presentation, and I really do appreciate the efforts for equity to get more folks who deserve and who should enjoy Broomfield spaces. So thanks so much, and I appreciate it again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Winn. Councilmember Cullen?
Thank you. I'll be quick. Clearly, the ratio is, you put two years into a report, you have to wait three and a half hours to present it. So I'm sorry about that.
It was interesting tonight, the discussion. I enjoyed it.
I had just two quick questions, just to clarify on the affordable housing and then reducing the acreage. I assume that's just simply a matter of economics, that in order to make it happen, we have to reduce the land. How does, what is the perspective of how many acres you need per people? Because I think one formula was four acres would be for 300 people in that complex. Does that still meet our minimum requirements for that kind of recreational space?
The 24 acres per thousand employees, or employees, cut that out of my brain now. People, residents, that's the formula that we use for figuring out the public land dedication. And Clay, I don't know if you want to add anything more about, you know, how many people typically use a park. I don't, I don't think I know that statistic. I'm not sure if it even exists, actually. But the 24 acres per thousand, we are keeping that across the board in all of those scenarios that I quickly went through, so that is not changing. And that, that at the time was to be eight acres open space, eight acres, 16 acres park and eight acres open space.
We're comfortable that that four acres for that kind of ratio is sufficient. Okay. And just real quickly, I know there's been a, we constantly hear the idea that affordable housing and open spaces and either or, though I think this community has proven that that's not the case, that we can do both. And we're certainly grateful to the people who had the foresight to start this many, many years ago, so we can actually get close to 40%. The, to raise, you have, you did a very nice job of expressing what the costs really are, that, you know, this isn't, this comes at a great cost. We're not going to have 65 million or 759 acres. So I assume there would, what's the strategy? We would have to get public land dedication to reach the 40%.
I, I mean, slowly but surely, we could purchase all of it, but I do think that in our current situation, we've relied on the public, the private sector to provide some of that land. And in many cases, there is a willingness to do that. Not always, but I think it can be seen as a positive for their project, too. So I think, you know, you will have private sector involvement through the public land dedication, and then there are opportunities for grants and partnerships with other governments. And all that land on the western side of Broomfield was a partnership with Boulder County, Lafayette, Lewisville, and Erie has been involved in some of that, too. So I think, I think that's a reality. I don't think that's a pie-in-the-sky idea, but just for our numbers, we wanted to be as conservative as possible.
But we should look at the 65 million as, well, we can't do shit, we're done. We can, there's, there's.
I would agree.
Formulas that we can work to make that happen in the next 10 to 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cullen. Councilmember Marsh Holsen?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you for presenting this. This is a lot of work that you guys have, you all have gone through getting this before us, and I appreciate all the work, and this is a really good plan. I do have a couple questions, kind of going off of what Councilmember Ward said earlier. In the, the difference between little pocket parks that the individual developments provide versus larger park areas that, you know, for kids. For example, I live in Brandywine, and when Brandywine was built, they built parks as part of the, and Brandywine, Will Park, Will Run has a park, even with the apartment complex there, that's right next to the, you know, one of the parks. So it gives the kids and the families that live there the opportunity to have big spaces to recreate, to play sports, you know, throw the football around, whatever. So I guess as the development in the southern and eastern part of, sorry, southern and western section of Broomfield, there's predominantly single, multi-use, multifamily apartments, it seems like a lot more of just the pocket park type thing. And I wonder why we didn't, and we aren't, doesn't seem like we're continuing with the idea of building bigger parks in those areas. Broomfield building the parks rather than developers. I know Arista has some good parks, but I remember right when I got in council, or probably right before council, before I got in council, that there was some complaints and fighting with the Arista developers to produce the parks that they had promised. And so then I'm speaking, then also, you know, there is the area of the, where the harvest station, harvest station apartments are, that are, that is east of 30, the 36 and west of the train tracks. A lot of apartments going in there, but there's no parks. And I know Councilmember, former Councilmember Lindstedt tried to get a park in there, and there were some RCD issues, but, so I guess what's the plan as far as those areas with the, with larger recreating areas for kids and families?
Well, I want to give Clay an opportunity to speak, because we are talking about parks a lot, and then I can add any other follow-up ideas?
And I want to start, I want to start with the development piece. I'm going to take this cough drop out. Sorry about that. So enormous difference between a residential community development, Brandywine, Arista, Crofton Park, where part of that overall development, that's why you're going to see those larger parks. When you have the standalones, as, as Councilmember Ward referred to them, there is not, there, there's, there's not a long-term thoughtful way, because it's, it depends on the cadence of the developer, right? So that public land dedication was forcing those developers to provide some level of green. So relatively speaking, it's, you're comparing, you're not even comparing apples and oranges. You're comparing a fruit and a vegetable and not, and not a tomato, right? So there's not even, they're not even in the realm of the same kind of, the same family. They're, they are, they're vastly different. So to have a coordinated effort, I mean, you, you all see the developments coming through. 363 units here, 450 units there, 220 units over here. And so each one is going to have to have that conversation about the dedicated, whether they connect with trails, whether they're a larger footprint. So the way you get a larger green footprint is you change the public land dedication to require a larger footprint. In order to stay strategic, and I wish the, Mr. Kraus was still here, it wasn't as if we threw a dart and said 40%. Our leadership predecessors and predecessors on council, they didn't want a home that was more than a five-minute walk, five to seven-minute walk. So when you look at, and it was easy for us because we're little, right? I mean, we've got 34 square miles. So based on the 20-year plan at the time, we knew where the developments were essentially going to go. So that's where it got to the, to the 40%. Achieving it, to your point, the one thing is achieving it, another thing is achieving it strategically. And so when we're in control of something, we can be more strategic. When we are depending on public land dedication for the developer, we can, it's much less strategic. With having strategy, it's dollars. So for us to say, we're going to build the park, we're going to maintain the park, I mean, we're still discovering, peeling back these layers of the onion for many parks that now the bill has come due. So we said 20 years ago, yep, we're going to take over that park, and we're going to take over maintenance, and we're going to take over the trail, and we are going to maintain all of these various, all of these various pieces. It's high labor, and it's very expensive. So again, the trade-off is, the more we want to control, the higher the cost. The smaller pieces that we continue to get on these departments, on these apartment buildings, having that public land dedication is the fallback. So if we start seeing, if we say public land dedications, we've seen, we've seen some. I know that the mayor and, and Mayor Protem can remember them over a period of time to where the trade-offs of having green versus whatever else that particular developer wanted, because it, it's more expensive. So it's, the bottom line is, is it's, it's about the, it's about the dollars for the, for more control.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Playshark Director of Operations. I think the one thing that I, that I had to what, or what City Manager Hoffman said is that we're also trying to make a big distinction between what you're talking about is those privately-owned and maintained areas in those small developments, like an apartment complex or condominium, versus public land dedication that is actually operated and maintained by us. So we're trying to make sure that if, if they want that, they can do that on their own site. We're just asking them for an access. He's been through that property, and we'll count a portion or some of that or all of that towards PLD. But the sites we're actually looking for are, are those bigger sites, and there's sites that are more collective for the entire neighborhood and not just small individual group.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Castriano?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for your dedication and your hard work and your devotion to protecting what our community truly values and making Broomfield such a special place to live. So thank you for all of this.
Thank you, Mayor Castriano. So I have a very important question. So, Mayor, City and County Manager, are you saying that a tomato is a fruit or a vegetable?
Well.
I'm just, I'm really just giving you a.
Tomato, tomato.
I do have, I do have, I do have a question, though. On Chapter 8, this is where the proposed PLD changes are located within the plan. And I'm curious that you, you had mentioned that that would be coming back to us as an ordinance. Are we beholden to those recommendations that are in the plan, or is that going to be open for interpretation during that ordinance process? I guess I just wanted to clarify that for council as well as for the public when that ordinance comes back.
That first scenario that we showed you, that requires 25% of the side area for residential to be allocated to public land dedication, and then if that is not done, then the balance is at market value. And if there is still public land dedication, when they meet the onsite requirement, we use the assessor's assessed value. We're basically kind of using that formula right now. The income-aligned housing, we, we, you know, have not really moved into, into that kind of a, a formula yet. So we're already doing Scenario 1, and I, I think Anna Burton Zetti is here, the co-community development director, planning director. If you want to add anything more, please do. But when we do have projects come in with income-aligned housing, we, we have been negotiating to the best of our ability to, you know, get a good public land dedication solution. And sometimes that is, you know, all cash-in-lou, given a particular project's constraints. So, you know, it will vary, but until that ordinance is approved, that would not be officially in place. And having it in the code would be a nice solution to streamline the process.
Thanks for that. So just to clarify, so this will be the basis of the staff recommendation when that ordinance comes forward?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's the only question I have. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, thank you so much for the presentation. Next is council's consideration for proposed Resolution Number 2024-11. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution Number 2024-11, adopting the open space, parks, recreation, and trails plan.
Is there a motion?
Sorry, didn't realize I was the only one who was still awake. So moved. So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you, Councilmember Winn?
Second.
We, we have a, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. No further discussion. We will move forward with the vote on the Resolution Number 2024-11. Council, please cast your vote electronically. All councilmembers have entered their vote. The results will now be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously. There are no requests for future action this evening. Is there any other business to come, is there any other business to come before council? There is no further business. The council meeting is adjourned.